I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's Town Council meeting for Monday, March 23rd. It is 7:00 PM and we will begin with a pledge of allegiance. Roll call please. Councillor Carrasco?
Present.
Councillor Clements?
Delayed.
Councillor Estrada?
Present.
Councillor Manna?
Present.
Councillor Moriarty?
Present.
Councillor Pellicwen?
Present.
Councillor Steves?
Delayed.
Councillor Vandal?
Delayed.
Councillor Vecchia?
Present.
Six present, three delayed. Thank you. We have a forum. Just as a quick note, the reason for the delay of some of the councillors, there is a general government subcommittee meeting that began at 5:30 that is continuing on deep into the evening apparently, so in order to move on, we are doing so. Agenda item number three is to consider and accept Town Council meeting minutes of Monday, March 9th, 2015.
So much.
Second.
Any corrections? Any abstentions? I will, because I was not here for the last meeting. Okay, a simple hand vote is fine then, all in favor? Thank you. Agenda item number four is subcommittee reports. A is general government, and let's see real quick, because Councillor Clements is downstairs. Briefly. A meeting of the General Government Subcommittee was held Wednesday, March 11th, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were Committee Chair Clements, members Councillor Vandal, Councillor Pellicwen, and Mike Janes. Also in attendance was Treasurer Collector Mindy Ernst-Fonier. Member Cristo was excused. The meeting was called to order at 7:00 PM. First agenda item, vote to confirm the appointment of Orlando Casada of Southbridge to the Cable Advisory Committee effective immediately for a three-year term to expire June 30, 2015, and submit to council for ratification. Mike Janes made a motion and Councillor Pellicwen seconded. A brief discussion was held regarding Mr. Casada's qualifications, and all were in agreement that he would be an asset to the Cable Committee. Vote by a show of hands to recommend the appointment of council, all in favor, four to nothing. Second agenda item, review the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 60, Section 15B, to establish a tax title collection revolving fund for the Treasurer Collector. The fund will be credited any fees, charges, and costs incurred by such officer under Sections 15, 55, 62, 65, 68, or 79, and collected upon the redemption of tax titles and sales of real property acquired through foreclosures of tax titles. Expenditures may be made from such revolving fund without further appropriation in connection with a tax-taking or tax title foreclosure. Councillor Clements asked for any questions from the committee. Councillor Vandal asked Ms. Ernst-Fonier for an overview of the request. Ms. Ernst-Fonier explained that the law allows a community to establish this type of revolving fund to pay for and collect fees associated with tax title and foreclosure processes. She listed that the fees can be deposited and paid for out of this account, as noted in her memo to the council dated February 26, 2015. She further explained that setting up this fund would eventually lead to the independence from the general fund appropriations, which is currently $21,800 per year. Initial funding can be appropriated from the accounts of services, $19,500, and advertising, $2,300, thus reducing her fiscal year 2016. Discussion on the foreclosure process was held with references to cost and time. Mr. Janes asked if interest is collected and whether monies can be taken out of the account for other purposes, if the balance becomes large, and if we collect interest. Ms. Ernst-Fonier noted the interest collected on the accounts goes into the general fund, and she would look further into the regulations regarding removal of funds and provide that information to council. The establishment of this fund will allow us to fund and plan better for future foreclosures. A motion was made by Mr. Janes, seconded by Councillor Pellicwen, to recommend to council to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 60, Section 15B, to establish a tax title collection revolving fund for the Treasurer Collector, as explained above, and submit to council for ratification. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, four to nothing. Respectfully submitted Denise Clements, Committee Chair. That committee also has just wrapped up a meeting downstairs, which we will have minutes for at the next meeting, and the topics of discussion, I'm sure, will be brought up quite a bit later on this evening. And with that, I will give Councillor Clements a moment, if she so desires.
You read the minutes? Thank you very much, and we will be having a meeting, because we didn't get through all of our agenda items this evening. We had a great turnout for the meeting that we just came up from. We were discussing the insurance plan, which is on tonight's agenda. I'm sure you will get a lot of information if you tune in and stay with us and listen. Lot of information. I'm not sure everybody got it all, but Mr. Pagos is trying to do his best to get that out and across to everybody, for the benefit of the entire community. So, thank you, and I'll let you know when we have the next meeting.
Thank you. Subcommittee reports. B, DPW, Councillor Vandal?
No report, no meeting scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you. C, Education and Human Services, Councillor Pellicwen?
Thank you. A meeting of the EHS Subcommittee was held on Thursday, March 12th, 2015, in the George Parent Conference Room. In attendance were myself, Councillor Moriarty, Councillor Steves, and Councillor Vecchia. Also in attendance were Councillor Clements, Andrew Pelletier, and Dick Whitney. I called the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Agenda item number one, vote to recommend the appointment of Beth Canoyer of Southbridge to the Jacob Edwards Library Board of Trustees for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2018. Mr. Whitney said she would be a great asset to the board. They still have openings and are hoping to fill them within the next month. A motion was made by Councillor Steves, and seconded by Councillor Vecchia with a favorable recommendation to council to recommend the appointment of Beth Canoyer of Southbridge to the Jacob Edwards Library Board of Trustees for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2018. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, four to nothing. Agenda item number two, review and vote to authorize the totter maintenance revolving fund under the provisions of MGL, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, to pay for the replacement of lost and/or damaged totters from fees paid by homeowners and deposited into the account, with all expenditures to be approved by the Health Department, and total expenditures from the account not to exceed $5,000 per year, and to submit to council for ratification. Mr. Pelletier said that there has already been a 5% voluntary participation. He is hoping to be at 25% by the end of the year. In order to make the program sustainable, this account will be set up to accept deposits for replacement toters. A motion was made by Councillor Vecchia and seconded by Councillor Steves with a favorable recommendation to council to authorize the totter maintenance revolving fund under the provisions of MGL, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, to pay for the replacement of lost and/or damaged totters from fees paid by homeowners and deposited in the account, with all expenditures to be approved by the Health Department, and total expenditures from the account not to exceed $5,000 per year. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, four to nothing. A motion to adjourn was made by Councillor Vecchia and seconded by Councillor Steves. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, four to nothing. I adjourned the meeting at 7:20 PM. Respectfully submitted Evelyn Rivera, reporting clerk.
We do have a meeting scheduled on April 1st. It's going to be at 6:00 PM, and that's going to be to meet with the school superintendent to go over the school budget, and I believe we'll be going over Bay Path's budget that evening as well.
Thank you. D, Planning and Development, Councillor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no minutes to report and no meetings planned. Thank you.
Thank you. E, Protection of Persons and Properties, Councillor Carrasco?
No meetings and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. F, Town Manager's Search Committee, Councillor Carrasco?
Yes, the search continues, and we do have a meeting scheduled, try to pull it up here, on April 16th at 6:00 PM here in the George Parent Conference Room.
Thank you. Agenda item number five, Chairman's Announcements. I'll try to keep this quick, because I know we have a few weighty issues on the agenda tonight. Just as a disclaimer, and urging other folks out there to take notice and attend and take part over the next couple months, the next month really in particular, you will see a lot of different subcommittee meetings being held to discuss the budget, and this is really the time to look at that and discuss that, not so much the tax rate hearings and that sort of thing in the fall and in the early winter, when the budget's already been decided upon, and it is what it is. There's only so much you can do at that point. This is the time to do that. I know all councillors tend to try to make a good effort to attend those. I will be endeavoring to make each and every one of those meetings as humanly possible, and as an ex officio, I endeavor to cast my votes at each of those meetings as well. Also, we have just a couple of community notes. On Thursday, April 2nd, it is the annual Food Share Radio-Thon, which is on 970 AM. Please contribute whatever you can, whether it's cash or non-perishable food items, for Food Share, which does a great deal of things in this community and in Webster and elsewhere, helping a lot of people through difficult times. You can drop them off at the radio station on Holy Thursday, April 2nd, as well as a litany of other drop-off spots around the tri-community area. Saturday, April 11th, at 7:00 PM, as Councillor Carrasco pointed out last week in my absence, or last meeting rather, is the Tri-Town Domestic Violence Task Forces Dancing with the Stars at Burgess Elementary School. That's at 7:00 PM, and if you need a good laugh, I'm sure that I will provide so with my dancing ability. Fortunately, it's not the Gong Show. Lastly, just as a note, because I've had a number of phone calls, emails, and other communications over the last few days from people with questions and ambiguities and concerns, we just recently had, the Charter Review Commission had its first meeting just this past week, and they will be making a brief presentation of introduction to the council in the very near future. That committee, which consists of former Town Councillor Kathy Nacola, in the Town Manager's Office, Yvonne Tortis, our Town Clerk, Matty Bonadillas, as well as citizens Jim Sotilly and Leanne Pate. There were some questions or concern as to the validity or legality of certain appointments. Quite frankly, through the Charter and through Mass General Law, there is no problem in doing so. The problem would have been an elected official getting one of those appointments if it was a paid position or a quasi-judicial appointment. This is not the case here. Ultimately, those posts, those seats, were advertised here, on the website, in the newspaper, through an article, as well as other bulletins, and so forth, over the course of three to five months. Ultimately, through encouraging certain people in cases, but trying to get people in, we had five people apply, and five were appointed. Certainly, anybody else who could've, or would've, or should've, could've, would've, and should've. And with that in mind, we have a number of different vacancies that are still available across town, which include two on the Agricultural Commission, plus one alternate member, one on the Airport Commission, two on the Cable TV Advisory Board, one on the Central Mass Regional Planning, three constables, three for the Economic Development, one for the Education Fund, an alternate member for the Liquor Licensing Board, two for the Local Historical District Study, two alternates for the Planning Board, two public wires, two for the Recreation Committee, one for the Scholarship Committee, three for the Cultural Commission, two for the Trail Committee, and an alternate member for the Zoning Board of Appeals, not to mention a litany of other positions, including these ones, the School Committee, and other elected boards that you can go and take papers out now down in the Town Clerk's Office for. We have plenty of places for people to help out, and unfortunately, not enough doing so. So I encourage people to do that. And with that, I will turn it over to number six. Agenda item number six, Town Manager's Announcements.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I have nothing except for the budget presentation and health insurance later tonight.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number seven, we have two for swearing-in presentation, two things tonight, the first of which is a presentation from Robin Latai for Donate for Life, and I would invite Robin to come on up.
Thank you all for having me here. I really appreciate being invited to come again this year. Last year was my first year coming to you folks with the raising of the flag in Southbridge, and again, thank you for having me this evening. I appreciate it.
And you have the flag with you tonight as well?
I do not have the flag. What we do with the flag is we have the flag when we actually raise the flag, is close to April 1st, with everybody deciding when a good point is to raise it, and the snow outside also, depending on how deep we are, is close to April 1st to have it hung for the whole month of April.
Okay, excellent. Before we go then, I have something for you. We have here just a proclamation, and this is from the New England, presented to the New England Organ Bank, and this reads, "Whereas, there are more than 123,000 Americans with more than 5,000 here in New England and more than 3,000 in Massachusetts who are currently waiting for a life-saving organ transplant, and whereas there are over 1 million life-enhancing tissue transplants each year that are made possible by the generous donations of corneas, bone, skin, or other tissues, and whereas we can all help to save someone's life and benefit up to 50 recipients by signing up to become an organ and tissue donor by enrolling in the Massachusetts Donor Registry when we apply for or renew our driver's licenses, or by registering online at www.donatelifeneeuroland.org." Just quickly, I'll repeat that. It's donatelifeneeuroland.org. "And whereas Massachusetts is home to the pioneering efforts of many of the world's first organ transplant surgeons, it is fitting that Massachusetts continues its unique leadership role and join in the national goal of signing up 50% of our driving population to become donors and is dedicated to making it fast and easy to sign up to save a life through our Registry of Motor Vehicles. And whereas this observation, rather, this observance, pays tribute to organ and tissue donors and their families whose decision to donate life enables others to receive life-saving organs and tissues for transplant, now therefore we, the Town Council of Southbridge, Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim April 2015 to be Donate Life Month and urge all citizens of Southbridge to take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in its observance."
I would just like to take a few minutes to just explain, basically, I received a kidney transplant on January 3rd, 2015. I celebrated just this past January my five-year transplant anniversary. I live the gift of life and celebrate it every day. I want to thank all of you out there in the audience that are organ donors. I greatly appreciate it. I was saved by a deceased organ donor. And for all of you that are thinking about it and have not yet done it, I'm a miracle here in front of all of you to take the time and to please reconsider, if you haven't done it yet, to sign up. And I celebrate by going to local events, public events, speaking as much as I can about the awareness of organ donation. Again, thank you all for your time, and thank you all again.
Moving on to agenda item 7B, Fiscal Year 2016 Budget Presentation, and that is by our interim Town Manager, Mr. Kevin Pagos. Sure. While he does, just again, the organ donation piece, easy to do, and doesn't hurt at all, unlike this next presentation.
I missed that, but it must have been good.
That's okay.
So, Ms. Chairman, members of the council, and public viewing tonight, it's time for the presentation to you of the annual operating budget. Now, just a small caveat so that we're clear here. This is the operating budget. This doesn't include any capital expenses. That'll be presented to you separately in another night. Immediately following the presentation, you'll be given your budget books with a much more detailed version of what I'm about to present to you in writing as an executive summary of the budget that you'll see. So, hopefully I pushed the right button. Okay. The council had a few goals that you wanted to see realized in this budget. First, no use of new fiscal '16 tax revenue. That's the $871,846 that you voted that we would not levy. Secondly, that we would increase the town employee health insurance contribution share from 50% to 60%. Third, that we would reduce our use of non-cyclical revenue for the operating budget, specifically the Casella money that will end in approximately six years, and use the free cash. We use about $2 million, a million from Casella, and about a million from free cash every year. Those revenues, in the case of Casella, will end in six years. In the case of free cash, are very unpredictable, and so relying on them as a regular source of the budget is very dangerous. So you wanted that reduced. A fourth goal was added somewhat informally during the budget, the revenue expense forecast about a month ago, after it was realized that current expenses greatly exceed available annual revenue. Why is that? That $2 million, a million from Casella and a million from free cash that's in your budget and that supports expenses, is not sustainable going forward. So, while the council never voted this goal, the staff took it upon themselves that we would attempt to reduce the operating budget in an amount at least equal to $500,000. What that would do is it would position you better in future years going forward to live without that $1 million of landfill royalties and the free cash every year. Very happy to report to the council that all four goals have been accomplished in this budget. The tax revenue of $871,846 has not been used to balance this budget, not a penny of it. The town's health contributory share has been increased in this budget from 50% to 60%. The cost of doing that was $320,300, and as you'll see, it did not come from savings with respect to implementing the benchmark plan, because unfortunately, even the benchmark plan causes a increase to the budget. And we'll talk about that a bit later tonight. Our use of landfill royalties, we've taken $150,000 of that money out of the revenue stream supporting this budget, and we've taken $50,000 of free cash out. That means of that $2 million of those non-sustainable revenues, we've been able to take about 10% of that out of this year's budget. I really wish that we had made, had been able to make more progress on that note, but that's what we were able to accomplish for you. And finally, with a goal of $500,000 reduction in the permanent budget, we were able to actually reduce $765,000, which is much greater than the goal. How did we accomplish that? First, the power purchase agreement that you signed back in November is going to give the town $296,182 in reduced electric costs. Now, that's the first year. You may recall that when you did that, and we did the revenue estimates for you back in November, we were talking closer to a half a million. The reason it's not quite that yet is because those solar fields are not all built. There's three of them. They'll be coming online through the fiscal year, and as those come online, we'll realize more revenue. Next fiscal year, July 1st, 2016, to June 30, 17, you will probably get a lot more money as those last two solar fields are built. But, $296 this year is pretty good. Pretty happy about that. Second, we discovered some weeks ago during the review of the budget that the Wells School was being fully heated and lighted, and despite the fact that the buyers had indicated a willingness to have it fully winterized. We have now winterized it, and the cost of the town, I'm sorry, the savings of the town is $66,000. Twenty or thirty of that is on the electric side, the rest is on the heating side. The buyer has agreed to that in writing and has no objection. As you probably know, their plan is to essentially gut the interior, so there really was no point whatsoever in keeping it heated and lighted. It's unused. It is, however, under surveillance. We have adopted a different method for that, which I won't report publicly, obviously, but it is under surveillance despite the electricity not being on inside the building. Unfortunately, the health insurance benefits redesign, i.e. the benchmark plan, when we got the quotes from the only two carriers that were interested, Maya, on behalf of Blue Cross, and Fallon, did not result in savings below the current budget. It did allow the FY '15 budget to not have to be increased. And I'll talk about that later tonight, but rough numbers. Were we to stay with our current plan, our budget would have to go up $450,000, divided 50/50 between the employees and the town, to stay with the current plan. Whereas if we go with the benchmark plan, the budget only has to go up about $51,000. So, the benchmark plan does save money, but it does not allow our budget to go down, and that had been the hope. We also received some new state aid from the Governor's proposed budget. House One, as it's called, is late this year, because we have a new governor, and the new governor is given 90 extra days to propose his or her budget. We picked up $433,344 in that proposal in local aid, more than what we had forecasted back in January when we did our original forecast. Now, that forecast called for a 2% increase in Chapter 78 and a 5% decrease in other governmental aid, basically all the rest of it. What we got was much, much better, $433,000 beyond what we had predicted. It's actually over a half a million over what we got last year. So, in past history, basically ever since Prop 2.5 passed in 1980, the Governor's budget, House One, has always become the benchmark, the bottom line for what we're going to get in local aid. And in fact, usually the legislature, very quickly after the Governor proposes his budget, adopts something called a local aid resolution, where they say, "Yes, this is what you're going to get. Whatever else the budget looks like for the state, you're going to get this much," and that always batches pretty much exactly what the Governor proposes in House One. So cities and towns forever, once House One comes out and we get those numbers, and they're typically announced at the MMA meeting in January, this year again, it was a little bit later. Typically, we put those numbers right into our budget, and we're pretty safe. When the state budget finally emerges, usually in a conference committee, out in June or July, and sometimes even August, we know that we're going to get at least what was in the Governor's budget. But this is a different year. The House and Senate have refused to pass a local aid resolution so far, and in so doing, they're saying that they may not necessarily agree with the Governor's proposal for increased local aid in House One. So what we've done is we've only predicted 75%. We've left the rest of that money there. The way we've structured this budget, if the remainder of that money were to occur, and since the budget is already balanced on the basis of a more modest projection, my suggestion to you would be to take that additional state aid when it emerges, amend this budget, and use it exclusively for the purpose of reducing either the landfill royalties or free cash, and make some further progress on those two goals. In addition to those new revenues, we also had to reduce the budget. So, the school budget has been reduced approximately $300,000, and the town budget $570,000. When I met with the superintendent and the financial team, and announced to the superintendent that that was my recommendation, I had a couple ideas in mind. First, to keep the cut impact to the school department as low as possible. Now, the school department budget is about 2/3 of all spending, and the general government is about 1/3. So in past years when you've had to cut budgets, generally, you took whatever the cut amount was, and you said to the school, "You have 2/3 of the cut. The town will take 1/3." That would have resulted in just about exactly a flip of these numbers. The school would have had $570,000, $600,000. We'd have had about $300,000. I'm always trying to read sometimes what the council is saying to me. Sometimes that's unspoken. Sometimes it's very clear. In this case, what I thought I heard you saying during the discussions on the budget was that your preference was that we not reduce the school budget by as much perhaps has been done in the past in similar kinds of situations. So, I offered the superintendent a $300,000 cut, and that the town would take the bulk of the reduction. We also wanted to have an opportunity for the schools to do even better than the $300,000 cut. And so as you'll see later in this presentation, we offered the school department a challenge to correct some management practices that have been engaged in in the past, and by so doing, realize back into their budget some of that $300,000 that they won't ultimately have to cut. And I'll show you how that works. An unemployment compensation, as I showed you in the revenue expense forecast a few weeks ago, has been running typically $200,000, $300,000, $400,000 a year for three or four years now. The vast majority of that occurs in the school department, and it is a result of certain management practices, which causes layoffs, separations from, involuntary separations from school service by a number of employees annually. I won't get into tonight. It is not my purpose to get into what those practices are. It is simply to suggest- are, it is simply to suggest to you that I've reviewed those and they can be changed. And if those practices are changed, then unemployment can be reduced. And I think it's a fairly straightforward thing to do that, and I will, I will not speak for the superintendent. I think she concurs, and I'm hoping that the school committee concurs as well. So what we did is we took the $215,000 unemployment budget, which exists outside the school and the town budget, and I said to the superintendent, I'm going to give you as part of your $300,000 cut, this unemployment money, $200,000. But if you can change the practices that lead to that expense every year, then you can keep whatever you save. And my hope is that with that opportunity, that the school department is enabled, is able to indeed change those practices, save that money, and retain it in their budget. The other cut of the $300,000, 100, is the actual cut. So 100,000 of the 871,000 is an actual cut. Yes, so we hope it's less. Over on the general government side, we had to do a number of things in order to make that $570,000 cut work, and as you'll see, we substantially exceeded it. First, there were four permanent positions unfilled. They were vacant and unfilled. We had been freezing those for some months now in anticipation of this possibility, so we eliminated them. That was one police officer, one firefighter EMT, one DPW equipment operator, and one library employee. It is just coincidental that those happened to fall in exactly those four large departments. It was not choice. That saved approximately a quarter million dollars in direct payroll and fringe benefit costs. The savings could be larger because what we can't say is who of those four people would have taken the town's health insurance and would not. Statistically, about 50% of our eligible employees take our health insurance, so we could add another $21,000 to that savings, but we took it on a conservative estimate and said about a quarter million. In addition to that, there were other personnel reductions made in this budget. One town hall clerical position was eliminated. We're hoping to do that by transfer to the school department, and we've been assured that the school department will accept that employee. The logic prevailed when we saw where this budget was going, that it was necessary after we made those four personnel cuts, police, fire, DPW, library, that more was needed, and we didn't think it was equitable or fair to turn to those four departments to make yet another cut, so we looked at town hall as the only remaining place to make a cut. And that's why that position was eliminated. Now, in order to do that, we needed to reassign some clerical staff in the building. So three additional positions have been assigned new duties. We have restructured those assignments. One DPW position was reclassified with a reduction, and the council subcommittee clerical capability was eliminated. Council, of course, can restore that if you want, but my logic is simple. The vast majority of those subcommittee meetings are very brief. There's no reason why the town manager can't take the minutes, or a member of the committee, or a citizen member of the committee without having to pay for it. A number of other operating budget reductions were necessary because with all those cuts, we hadn't quite gotten where we needed to be yet. We had originally, in the forecast that I showed you back in January, provided for a 2.5% COLA for all employees. The police and fire unions, it's already in their contract. Those contracts don't expire until June 30, 2016, so that 2.5% COLA is a fixed item. However, the non-union and the DPW employees, we reduced that COLA, recommended COLA from 2.5 to 2.0. That saved about $25,000. The town council, as in town attorney, policy that you have to take a look at later tonight, if that's approved and those practices are put into effect, it's going to allow you to reduce your town attorney budget. So we've taken a conservative estimate, $15,000, we've reduced it. I think the actual reduction you'll see at the end of next year will be more substantial, but we felt very confident that this will occur if you implement that policy. The new building commissioner, as you know, our current commissioner, has given us his retirement, and will be doing that at some point in the not distant future. The new commissioner will come in lower on the pay scale, and that ends up because he'll be a new employee as opposed to a many, many-year employee as our current commissioner is, and that's about a $10,000 savings. The regional veterans service organization that we started with Charlton last year requires Charlton to pay us $16,000, that's new revenue. Our cost didn't go up, it went down, and we have the benefit of having that additional revenue now available to us. And there are less buybacks, sick leave buybacks this year, that's about a $15,000 savings. So that's about an $80,000 savings there. There were other cuts made in the budget that were not in the area of personnel. The vast majority of the cuts are in area of personnel because about 80% of our budget is personnel costs. So in order to get the budget down by over half a million, it was necessary to make personnel reductions. But there were other opportunities when we looked at the budget. The assessors and Will Cornier, chief assessor, looked at the overlay. Originally, we had forecasted $225,000. They are exceptionally good at the way they do their job, particularly Will as chief assessor, and they get very few appeals. So it was their decision, after they looked at the 225, this being a reval year coming, and that's why they wanted to boost it, that they could get by with the $200,000. That is very much to their credit, to the entire board of assessors and to Will Cornier in particular, that they're able to live with this small an overlay. The overlay, as you recall, is a margin to cover exemptions and abatements that are granted and tax, property tax appeals that are filed. Electricity, as already noted, was reduced $296,000. There are less elections next year, so we're able to reduce that budget by $10,000, and so all those changes saved about $35,000. Now, there are some increases in this budget as well. The first of those is the cost of living adjustment for police and fire that I just mentioned, and the 2% increase for non-union and DPW. In addition, this budget contains $45,000 in new spending to implement the Quinn bill for police officers who do not currently receive the Quinn bill. I will be giving you a separate memo on that subject, probably in a week or two, about why I think it's necessary for the town to have a Quinn bill, to pay the Quinn bill, or some sort of educational stipend for police officers, because I believe we are becoming non-competitive in the marketplace. Combined effects of the 50/50 health insurance contribution, which is less than most communities pay, and the lack of Quinn bill funding, educational center for police officers is costing us offices. That's the, that's the reality. And I'm going to present you with a memo that's going to show what our neighbors are doing in that line. But again, I want to emphasize, this is a balanced budget that has accomplished all those goals I already mentioned, everything the council asked for, but this funding is included. The fire department has long wanted to have a single, one day a year, department-wide training day. They can't do it because there isn't enough money in their budget to pay the overtime for people to come in who are already on, that are not already on staff that day. Bringing the entire department together for a training exercise is enormously beneficial to the operation of the department, but it costs money, $24,000 to be specific. So I've provided that funding in this budget. Again, the budget is balanced, it accomplished all your goals, but this funding was able to be accommodated. Our veterans benefit program chronically is over expended. There's no point to that because you must spend those Chapter 115 benefits. It's not an optional thing. If soldiers come in, to Mike Trombley, a veterans officer, looking for those benefits, they must be provided them by law. We've chronically underfunded that budget, so we've increased spending by $10,000. 75% of that, by the way, comes back to the town from the state. We get reimbursed for that, so it's not really a $10,000 increase, it's a $2,500 increase net. And finally, recreation programs, that budget has been increased $5,000 in order to allow some recreation programs to be expanded. We have a new recreation director, as you know, 20 hours a week, and we want to be sure that he's got the materials available to be able to offer good recreational programming to our families and town. There was no money in the current budget for programming, so we put $5,000 in. It's a modest amount, but I think Stephen and I both agree that it's money that will go a long ways because he'll make it stretch. So to summarize, all of the council's goals are met in this budget. There are no new Prop 2.5 property taxes, the 871,000 will not need to be levied. The town's health insurance contribution is increased to 60%. The use of landfill royalty free cash has been cut by $200,000, and the budget has been permanently reduced by 3/4 of a million dollars. A COLA for all employees has been included. Funding for the Quinn bill has been included, for new employees, I should say. Existing employees already get that, as you know, police officers, it's to be for new police officers. The fire training day is included, the recreation department is fully established now, and the regional veterans district is well-established now. I would like to represent to the council that this budget is a little bit of a miracle. I don't think, a month ago, when we gave you the revenue expense forecast that we gave you, and the council that night voted to eliminate 871,000 in tax revenues, I don't think anybody would have had a realistic expectation that we would have accomplished all of these goals and done this in a single year. This is really a somewhat miraculous result. And I want to give credit to some people because they're the people who worked very, very hard for you, the council, to produce a budget that realizes your goals, and it worked very hard for the taxpayers of this community to allow us to have a balanced budget, and it allows the council to not have to levy new taxes next year. The most important of those people, Karen Hornoyes, Will Cornier, and Mindy Ernst-Fornio, the treasurer collector, chief assessor, and CFO respectively, I know they're here somewhere. Oh, they're looking up at the thing, okay, great. That's a great piece of work they did. And believe me, it's hundreds of hours of time that they gave to produce this result. I want to give a real, real strong thank you to Cheryl Stanton, the interim superintendent of schools. Cheryl has been an absolutely marvelous partner throughout this process. She's been as willing and cooperative as anybody could possibly be in working with us. She accepted that $300,000 cut right off the bat. She was grateful, subject, of course, to the school committee's agreement. She was grateful it wasn't more, and she was as cooperative as I could have expected. I couldn't have had a better partner, and I want to be sure to say that publicly. I don't know if Cheryl is here, but Cheryl is here, there she is. Thank you, Cheryl, very much. I also wanted to thank all the department heads, but in particular, Chief Charette, Chief DeFranzo, DPW director Heather Blakely, and head librarian Margaret Morrissey. Each of those department heads had an enormous amount of work to get from where their budgets originally came in, just status quo, just picking up for the cost of inflation and things like that, and get those budgets down to where they finally came in. And it's somewhere in the range of like a little over 1% increase that those budgets collectively came in. They all lost employees. They all did it, I won't say happily or wainly, I don't think it would be fair to say that, but on the other hand, they did it cooperatively and they did it with good cheer, and I can't expect more than that. And most important, I want to be sure that we staff, that we, that we thank the staff that works for you and me directly, Yvonne Tortis, Kim Ferron, and Cheryl Ryan. As I said to you in the executive summary memo, it isn't just the case that while we're, all this stuff is swirling around, health insurance, balancing the budget, the Charlton Water Agreement, the Casella Amendment to the contract, all enormous topics. It isn't just that they keep your schedule running and my schedule running, but they do it with incredibly good humor and with a smile, and they make everybody else that comes to that office feel good. That's pretty remarkable, and I want to thank those three ladies. That, Mr. Chairman, and members of the council, is the presentation. As I say, the budget books will be given to you, I think, very shortly, and you have a very detailed executive summary message in it, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Vecchia.
Through the chairman to the town manager, a couple points. Are you going to go over here?
I am, sir.
Okay. You mentioned that this school budget was cut $300,000. It wasn't actually cut $300,000, it was increased $305,000. So why do you mention it was cut $300,000 when you gave them $305,000 more than they had last year?
Yes, what I'm referring to is the budget that you saw, the theoretically.
Construction in January had to be reduced. That budget, which was 2%,
I understand.
Increased was reduced 3%.
I understand completely, but when you're up there and people are listening to you, and you said that they had to take a $300,000 cut, they did not take a $300,000 cut. They got an increase of $305,000.
That's correct.
Okay. Now, the second thing. You cut everything and you said it was a miracle, but you managed to increase the health insurance $320,000. Now, you had mentioned to us that it wouldn't cost us anything to go to the 60/40 split, but I see here it's going to cost us $320,000. Again, what's, what's the problem here? I'm not going to go for $320,000 extra in the budget. You stated it wasn't going to cost us any money.
Well, the council had conflicting goals, as you see. The goal of increasing the contributory share from 50/50 to 60/40 does not come without a price, and that price is $320,000. When we were unable to realize it with the new benchmark plan designed because it didn't, the quotes from the insurance companies didn't come in low enough, the choice was either stay at 50/50 and implement the benchmark plan, which would have been quite disadvantageous to the employees because they would have had to absorb co-pays and deductibles and got no increase. I made the decision to implement the council's goal by cutting elsewhere in the budget.
I'm glad, I'm glad you said you made the decision, because the second thing you set up there was that we, one of the goals that we had was to go to 60/40. We never voted on 60/40, and I don't know if you got the five votes here to go to 60/40.
Actually, counselor, you did vote the 60/40. It's part of your goals and objectives that you voted in November unanimously. You voted for it as well.
If it wouldn't cost us any money, we voted for it.
That is not what the goal says.
Well, that's what we, that's what I think the majority of you thought, that it wasn't going to cost us any money because you said you were going to find a way to get that money back.
Respectfully, that may be, may be what you meant, but it is not what this council said.
Okay, fine. So, okay, play on words. Another thing, you managed to add 2% raises in $45,000 to the Quinn bill. So if you were so tight for money, how did you manage to raise $45,000 for the Quinn bill in 2% cost of living increases?
We did it utilizing all the things that I just showed you in that presentation where we cut a lot of other expenses and we realized some new revenue. It's a combination of all these things that allows this budget to balance. There was no single quid pro quo where this revenue went up and this cost went up. It's all an enormous $56 million pot, which some things go up, some go down, but at the end of the day, the goal that was chartered by the council was accomplished.
Well, that's what you're saying. Now, I have another question. You keep on mentioning a million dollars that we get from Casella for the landfill. Well, we have two items here, landfill royalty, $950,000, and landfill reimbursement, $590,000. That totals 1.5 million, not 1 million. What am I missing?
Well, in point of fact, the total amount that Casella gives to the town is more in the order of $4 million. A million of that is a deferred cost because they provide curbside collection. $2 million a year is about the normal royalty fee. They also provide money reimbursement for the construction of Commercial Drive, and they support through reimbursements the majority of the border health staff. So the 1.5 is just the portion that we use to support the budget. There's other money that goes elsewhere.
Is that other money in the revenues here?
No, it's not pictured in the revenues. For instance, the money that supports the border health staff is not in that revenue statement, it's a direct reduction to the border health. We just net the budget in here.
Okay, but here's my point. I think it was five, six years ago, I voted for the industrial park road because we were going to get 2.5 million dollars extra. And you keep on saying that we're only getting a million dollars, when now you're saying we're getting 4 million. So I think- So I think the town should know that Casella, everything adds into about 4 million dollars. When you make a statement that it's a million dollars, it isn't a million dollars. It might be a million dollars on your sheet, okay? But it's 4 million dollars. That's very important because I've been staying right along. The main reason, one of the main reasons I voted for the road, and I was decided and vote, that probably road still wouldn't even been built. And I think Congress and I can vouch for that, okay? Because we were going to get an extra 2.5 million dollars a year. So that's very important to me.
We don't disagree.
Okay. Besides that, you answered my questions. I appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else with questions or comments? Sure. Just come up with your name and address, please.
Kevin Buxton, 28 Columbus Ave. You just mentioned the curbside pickup as $630,000. Isn't it true that the town pays $630,000 and then Casella reimburses monthly that same amount back? So isn't that a pretty much a wash, other than the interest they make on the money while they're sitting on it?
I don't think I mentioned the number 630,000.
Okay, you mentioned the curbside pickup contract is $630,000. The town pays it initially.
That's not my number, just so it's clear.
Okay. The town pays it initially, and then Casella pays back monthly that same amount. I just wanted to make that clear because you made it sound like we receive those funds as revenue to the town, but it's really just a reimbursement or shell -- I won't say shell game, that sounds a -- I just wanted to clarify on that. And I'll save my other statements for Assistant floor.
Thank you. Counselor Clemens?
Thank you. I just want to be clear through you to the town manager to make sure I fully understand. The money that we're doing with curbside pickup, we as a community could not afford to have free curbside pickup without them absorbing that cost of free curbside pickup. Would probably be a pay-as-you-throw community, which we will probably be in the future or some other entity, because I can't imagine that we're going to be able to come up with 700 or 800,000 for a curbside pickup for the entire community down the road, not when we have schools to fund and other issues.
As you say, it's an in-kind service that they give the town.
But there's a value.
But if they were not, when the landfill closes, by understanding their obligation to give it also terminates, the town at that point would either have to come up with the money to pay for a townwide contract, or we'd have to turn it over to the individual homeowner to pay for. Either way, it would be a loss of substantial revenue to the homeowner.
So it is a benefit regardless to everybody who uses it in the community? Thank you.
Counselor Manor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the town manager. I'm curious, it could be in our budget books. I had requested a few months ago, I believe, the amount owed to the town in regards to water and sewer, property taxes, and excise taxes and whatnot.
Uncollected
Yes.
Taxes and water sewer.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry if you didn't get that. It's on the monthly -- I believe that's on the monthly quarterly report, isn't it? No? All right, we'll get it for you. My apologies.
Thank you.
In terms of budget, the first thing I wrote down was one of your first slides, the 296,182 in regard to the electricity revenues. How, I mean, how certain are we that we will get that type of number? I mean, the budget is predicated on certain assumptions here, obviously. If we don't get the 296, or if there's some fraction of it, where do we stand? I look at some of these, you know, some other numbers like that, so I just -- and can we -- the other question would be, can we continue? The governor's giving us the extra monies, you're taking 75% on the next side of it, on the local aid. Will we be able to support this type of budget next year, you know, as we go forward? If we implement some of the additional costs that we've put in, some of the savings have represented us to be, now have additional costs in other very good things that we need for this community, will we be able to then continue to fund them? Obviously, we have a revenue stream from electricity, but at this moment, that's not guaranteed at this mo -- you know, because we're waiting for those solar to go on, the solar farms to work.
100% of the revenue that supports this budget is all projected. There isn't a single number in there that's actual because it is the nature of municipal budgeting that at this time of year, we sit down and do a forecast of our revenues for July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016. The state just did the same thing. The state takes the legislative leadership and the governor's office, and they get together and they do basically what Karen and Will and Mindy and I did, and they put a statement on the table, and then they have a discussion about what they think is realistic. And it's generally based on prior year performance and an estimate of what will come from other categories. Motor vehicle excises, a million dollars. And every year, we have to forecast where we think it's going. So I look at websites for new car sales and some other econometric tools that are available. At the end of the day, you do your best to estimate these revenues. Now, in the case of the two you mentioned, once the governor's budget is set, once local aid is set, it doesn't tend to go down unless, and it has gone down in some years, there's some sort of draconian set of events. The last time it went down was back in the 90s when we had a recession. Now remarkably, in the last recession, it didn't go down, the one that just started in 2008 and probably is over about a year ago. So is it possible that the governor's budget that he's setting this year that produces this new revenue could go down in a future year? Of course. In fact, I would just about guarantee it will sometime. But, you know, that's not the way you do budgeting. You forecast the governor's local aid, and then you tend to expect that will be relatively sustainable for a period of time, five to six years, absent a crash in the economy. With respect to the solar revenue, we have done that forecast extremely conservatively. I think you will actually get quite a bit more. But what we did is, remember that it's the difference between the price at which we purchased those solar credits, 11.5, and the price set by the utilities, Department of Public Utilities, for trading of those power purchase credits currently set at 23.4 cents. Were we to realize the entire margin, it would be closer, actually a little bit over half a million dollars. So what we did is we forecasted it conservatively. We dropped it down to a purchase price of 11.5, a sale price of 18 cents, and we're very confident that that number is easily realized, and there will be more on top of it. So what we're doing is we're taking around 2/3 of what we really think it is, and then in future years, you'll tweak it as it starts to get better. The difference between what we estimate and what actually comes in is the byproduct, one factor in free cash for June 30 of next year. But all the revenues, believe me, if I were of a mind to forecast too liberally, your CFO, Karen Hornoyes, is definitely not. And so Karen is extremely conservative and cautious, and does not allow anybody to establish an estimated revenue without being very sure that we're going to realize it. And remember, it's the nature of these things. Some of those revenues will come in a little less than we forecast, others will come in a little higher, and that ebb and flow through the whole $56 million of revenue we realize typically results in a surplus of 1 to 2 million dollars. That's free cash. So we feel we're being very conservative with this estimate.
And just one other follow-up. Without having seen the budget book and looking through the various departments, which I know we'll get to, have we created any cushioning? We talked about some capital accounts, some capital improvements for certain areas. Have we managed to put anything in that area? I want to say capital.
Well, you've got money in stabilization, in water and sewer surplus.
Right.
So there is money available for capital spending.
Right.
I'll be sending out the instructions on that probably next week
Okay.
Or later this week, and then it's going to take two or three weeks to assemble the capital budget, and that'll be back in front of the council probably about by, I would say, mid-April-ish, thereabouts. That's the second component to all this.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Manor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I just want to make a clarification. I did receive some of that information I requested. I suppose I was just questioning the collections. How are we doing on the collections? So if we could see how we're doing on those collections, and that does affect our
Sure, we'll get that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments at this time? Counselor Pellican?
Will the school be having a capital budget this year, or is it just on the town side?
I'm sorry?
Will there be a capital budget for the school this year, as there was this past year?
The question is, will there be a school budget presentation?
No, a capital budget for the school.
A capital budget?
For the school.
They'll be invited to submit like every other department will, sure. And I don't know what they'll submit, but they'll certainly be invited, yep.
Okay.
All right. Seeing no other questions or comments at this time, we'll move on to agenda item number eight, which is Citizens Forum. And at this time, if there are any residents who would like to come forward to speak on something not on tonight's agenda, now would be your time. Just come forward with your name and address, please.
Kevin Buxton, 28 Columbus Ave. I'll keep this very brief. There's a lot of information to absorb with the budget, and I hope to attend as many of the subcommittee meetings as I can to emphasize my interest in those areas. Tonight, I would like to speak, though, of, you know, the revenue coming in from our landfill is an important part. It needs to be the most important part. It's probably one of the greatest revenue generators in the town, and we need to see that progress. I know there is the fear that, well, if we don't do anything, it's going to end in five years whenever it's full. We need to understand that we receive the benefit of curbside pickup till 2027. That deadline that they're setting for completion has pushed them to a situation to try to get more land to develop. And in a recent border health meeting, I got assured that if there's any more land developed, it will add to our 2027 curbside pickup. But it needs to be more than that. We need to stop selling ourselves off as a cheap place to dump trash. We have a fair market report coming in soon, and I realize all of what I'm talking about is mainly discussed in the executive session because it has financial implications. We need a town manager. As soon as that town manager steps in, he's going to step into a very important negotiation with our landfill operator. All of our counselors need to be within that executive session discussion because we have a new town manager. He's not familiar with what we have done and what we are going through with our landfill. So all I basically want to say is I think we should see much more revenue, as much, of course, as much revenue as we can out of our landfill. It is a situation where stop feeling like we're always the underdog in the negotiation. I think we need to take a firm stand and say, yes, we have a landfill, and if we're going to operate the landfill, we're going to operate it to the benefit of not only our residents, but our budget. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Do we have any other residents who'd like to come forward to speak on something not on tonight's agenda? One more call. Seeing none, move on to agenda item number nine. Vote to confirm the appointment of Orlando Cacerda of Southbridge to the Cable Advisory Committee for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manor?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yeah.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda item number 10. Vote to confirm the appointment of Beth Canoyer to the Jacob Edward Library Board of Trustees for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manor?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda item number 11. Vote to confirm the appointment of Tracy Pallone of Southbridge to the Board of Registars as a Democrat to fill an unexpired term due to a resignation effective immediately through June 30, 2016, according to Massachusetts Election Laws and Regulations, Section 5115.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Manor?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yeah.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada, you said that one. Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda item number 12. Motion that the town of Southbridge engage in the process to change health insurance benefits of copays and deductibles under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 32B, Sections 21 through 23, and that the town of Southbridge accepts Section 21 through 23 of Chapter 32B of Massachusetts General Laws, so voted by the town council, Southbridge Town Council, on this date, March 23, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? Counselor Vecchia?
Well, if we vote for this, through the town manager, through the chairman, if we vote for this, does that mean that the $320,000 is going to stay in the budget?
No, that's a budget decision. That has not got anything to do with this. That's whether we go to 60-40 or stay at 50-50 is a council decision through the budget.
What is this vote going to do, please?
I'm sorry?
What is the vote going to do, please?
What is the vote?
Going to do?
If it passes.
The vote is going to allow the town to implement the benchmark plan, which carries with it about a 400-plus thousand dollar savings. I've given you some paperwork on that tonight to show the numbers. If we don't implement the benchmark plan and we do a status quo renewal, we keep a plan the way it is now, it'll cost us 10% more. It's a 10.1% increase that our carrier has notified us would be required.
That's where you get to $320,000?
No. The difference between the benchmark premium and the current premium, the status quo premium, is about $400,000. Implementation of the benchmark plan with more copays and deductibles wipes that increase out. It brings it down to about a $51,000 increase versus about a $420,000 increase, I believe.
One other question. If we vote no on this, this doesn't pass, what happens then?
Well, then we're going to have to find a few hundred thousand dollars more in the budget. And I can't give you the exact number yet
Right.
because the budget presumes that the council will vote to implement the benchmark
Say that over again, please.
Sure. If you renew the health insurance plan as it's currently constituted, with the scheduled benefits intact, then the cost of the -- the cost of that is 10% or about 400-plus thousand dollars. Let me just get the exact number here. $457,604 divided between the town and the employees, because we're 50-50. If you implement the benchmark plan, you approve this vote, then the cost to the town will drop to 51,000, the increase will drop to 51,000, of which the town will pay 25,000. So it's, we pay 228,000 or we pay 25,000. That's the difference.
If we vote for this, the increase is only going to be 25,000?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
You have a chart. You have a chart, by the way, that runs all that out.
We weren't given that.
Yeah, we didn't give it.
Not everybody has.
I don't have it.
You don't?
He got it from the office here.
Yes.
I don't have that.
I'm sorry.
I don't have it.
I'm sorry, I pressed you all to duck out when I were handing it over earlier.
All right, to answer my question, thank you very much.
It's coming.
Can we have another one, please?
Do we have any other questions, comments, et cetera? Councilor Manna?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. To the town manager, I was at that subcommittee meeting tonight and there was very much discussion, very much concern about the increase in co-pays and whatnot. So could you just, like, just review it somewhat so the community has an overall view of what's going on? I mean, we have the papers in front of us. We were at the subcommittee meeting, but not everybody knows what is actually going on. What is the savings going to be if we adopt the benchmarks versus staying status quo?
Okay, so on the chart?
And what also will it cost ultimately, if anything, to the employees?
Okay. So if you renew your current health plan with no changes to whatever the current co-pays and deductibles are, whatever those are, if you renew that plan, you're going to pay 10.1% more. The cost to the town over your current budget is $457,604.64. Of that amount, 228,802 is paid by the employees and 228,802 is paid by the town. Now, we have two different benchmark plan proposals and we're not trying to decide between them tonight. One of them would cost the town $51,000 to implement, the other would cost 64. The town's half of that would be 25,587.32. So think of it this way. If you do a status quo renewal, everything's exactly the way it is now, the town's cost is 228,000 more than this year. If you do the benchmark plan, whichever one you do, it's about 25,000 to 30,000 more. So there's a savings of $200,000 to the town and 200,000 to the employees. The employees, however, have to pay the cost of increases to their co-pays and deductibles because that's what produces the variation in the premium. Implementation of the benchmark plan is allowed by the Mass Health Reform Law, which I gave you all a briefing on a few weeks ago, and which towns are allowed to do. The state of Massachusetts has already done it for its employees. Around 15 to 20 cities and towns have joined the GIC and have thus done it for their employees that way. And about 80 or 90 cities and towns have implemented the benchmark plan but have done it on their own without joining the GIC. So the vast majority of municipal and state employees in the state of Massachusetts are now covered by the benchmark plan. We are in the very small minority.
Okay. There was another question. Shoot. The biggest concern that I heard down there was the amount of money that was going to be coming out of their pockets for the increase in the co-pays, the deductibles, and whatnot. But you showed us this letter. It's a letter basically of reimbursement up to a certain amount. Could you explain that?
Sure. Employees have two tools to mitigate these co-pays and deductibles. And first, let me just illustrate because I think you have to put in context what these deductibles are because people listening to this in the private sector are used to deductibles at a much, much higher level than we're talking about here. If we, again, we have two plans, the Fallon Plan and the Maya Plan. The Maya Plan is the Blue Cross Plan. So the Fallon Plan has a 300-600 deductible, 300 individual, 600 family. That's an annual. The Blue Cross Plan has a 300 individual, 900 family. Okay, so those are the deductibles. And then there's a whole huge schedule of co-pays, and I can go through any one in particular that you're interested in. Employees have two tools available to them, two, actually, three tools, to mitigate what those costs might be. First, and I'll use the family premium because it's easier than the individual. If the town implements the benchmark plan and it goes to 60-40 on a contributory share, then a family plan, an employee on a family plan, will save $3,000 a year in premium costs. A thousand of that is in, the reduction in the premium attributable to the benchmark plan, the higher co-pays. And 2,000 of it is attributable to the employee pays 10% less and the town pays 10% more, which is a 20% shift. So employees would have $3,000 who are on a family plan available to them that they didn't pay this year, that their costs would actually go down, their cost of premium, and they could use it toward those deductibles. The second tool an employee has is the town signed an agreement three years ago when you put the current deductibles and co-pays into effect. And what you promised the employees is that you would reimburse them if they had an inpatient or outpatient surgical co-pay. They would absorb the first one and then after that, we would reimburse them $100 for an inpatient stay, 200 or 400 for an outpatient stay. So that, and all subsequent operations as well. So that's a big mitigating factor because the bulk of that deductible typically for most people is a surgical co-pay, an inpatient or an outpatient. There's also a few people who have a lot of prescriptions that could have a lot of prescription co-pays and they could also hit that deductible. The third tool that's available to our employees, and it's called a flexible spending account. Flexible spending account, which we currently have set up, allows employees to have withheld from their pay a stated amount of money and they're not taxed on it. They can then take money out of that account in their name and they can pay these co-pays and deductibles with that money. Since they're not taxed on it, if they're in a 25% tax bracket and they put $100 aside, and they spend the $100 on co-pays and deductibles, $25 of that was just paid by the federal government in the form of not being taxed. So by using the agreement that the town provides for the reimbursement, by using the $3,000 premium savings, and by using the FSA, and a lot of this, our employees are just not well, they have not been well-educated how to use this stuff because we've got very little participation in the FSA. We've got very little participation. Mindy tells me, I think, five people in three years that have requested the surgical co-pays, and I know we've had more have surgeries. So we have very little employee awareness of these tools that are available to them. If you apply all three tools and you add that on to the premium savings, this is a tremendous opportunity for our employees to save enormous amounts of money, but they have to be educated about how this works. It is the new world of health insurance, that it is complicated and consumers of it have to be educated to understand how to use it to their advantage. But it is also the case that any employer that does not take advantage of contemporizing the plan, doing all these things we're doing, is going to simply get stuck with huge compounding premium increases year after year after year. We had a seven or eight last year. We had one similar the year before. And this year, we've got a 10. That's close to a 30% compounded health insurance increase over three years. Those are numbers that are not sustainable for this municipal budget. It will destroy this town's finances if we don't do something.
Okay, so I suppose if things stay status quo, it'd go at 10.1%. There's a huge increase for the employees and the town.
Correct.
If we go with the benchmark, we're paying 60, the employees are paying 40, but there's a small increase in the deductibles.
Very small.
Okay. So potentially, they're saving in the long run if we go with the benchmarks, correct?
The savings to the employee is nine, the benchmark plan is 10.1. The, I'm sorry, the status quo plan will increase 10.1. The benchmark will increase a little over 1%. So it's about a 9% swing. So if an employee is paying $1,000 now, they'll pay $90 more. Those are make-believe numbers. These numbers are much, much bigger. So it's a 9% swing in what the town pays and the employee pays. But then on top of that is the 60-40 change, which is a $2,000 savings for the employee because they're paying 10% less of the premium, we're paying 10% more. That's a 20% swing for the employee. I can't tell you if we don't do the benchmark, if we can afford to do that 60-40 change. Well, I can tell you pretty much you probably can't. What I can tell you is you could probably do a 2% or 3% swing. So we could maybe get to 52%, 53%, 54%, and the employees 48%, 47%, 46%. You could do that. But the council's goal was to get it 10 if we could, and we can do that within the context of this balanced budget. So the savings potential to the employee of $3,000 on a family plan, that's a real number. I mean, that's a, versus, you know, it's not 3,000 less than they're currently paying. It's 3,000 less than they will pay if we do the status quo renewal.
Thank you.
May I have Councilor Carrasco?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. One of my major concerns with this is because the whole purpose of us trying to go 60-40 was for employee retention. Is this going to provide that? Because, I mean, are we going to, by us making this huge jump, which will in turn affect our employees, is it going to be the benefit of why we wanted to do the 60-40 was for the employee retention?
I can answer the question only one way. I can say that there's an employee right now that I'm told who has already filed a transfer of papers and is ready to go. And if the 60-40 split happens, they probably won't. So that's one employee that I can say with some fair degree of assurance. I've not spoken with the employee directly myself, but that's what I've been told. The Quinn bill, because this is a police officer, the Quinn bill is also operative and in there somewhere, and I don't know how that affects this particular employee. But the health insurance, I think, is that employee's primary concern. In the 60-40, if we can get there this year, is still not where most communities are. Most communities are at 70%. That's pretty much the norm. Some are higher, some are lower, but 70 is about average. This move is taking you in the right direction, but I'm not going to represent to the council that there isn't some more work to do. I think there is. I think the goal should be to get to make further improvement next fiscal year, hopefully get to 65-35, or maybe get all the way to 70-30. I don't know. Will that help retention? Absolutely, positively, without a doubt, it will help retention. No doubt about it. Because the four, three officers that have left this year, and the fourth one planning, all left, they told me. I did exit interviews. They left because of health insurance, the contributory share split. They went to another community where, you know, the split was 65 or 70, and immediately got a $4,000 or $5,000 raise. These plans are now costing 20,000 to 22,000 a year. So a contributory share split of 10%, 15%, 20%, 25% is astronomical in the amount of dollars it puts back in the employee's pocket. So will 60-40 have a good effect? Absolutely. Will it prevent anybody from leaving whom would otherwise? I don't know. I mean, to me, if I could go to another community and get a 10% shift further, 70-30, I might go. But on the other hand, is 60-40 a lot better than 50-50? Yes, absolutely. And as I say, I don't see it as an endpoint. I see it as a step in the right direction.
Again, I think, thank you for your explanation. But my, another concern is worse, all these numbers that are being given in regards to the employee, it's assuming they're healthy and their family's healthy, that they're not going to the doctors, they're not going to therapists, they're not going to special So, because I just look right off the bat, out-of-pocket for prescriptions, that's going up $1,000, $2,000.
No, 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 that's the out-of-pocket maximum that could be paid. No, it's not a co-pay. That's an out-of-pocket maximum. The way that works is depending upon what the co-pay is for the particular drug, tier one, two, and three, generic, non-genetic, and so-called designer drugs, there's co-pays associated with each one of those, and you see the chart. Now, if somebody had, for the sake of discussion, 10 prescriptions and they were all designer drugs, in other words, they had no generic equivalent, which is just about impossible to do, but let's say they did, then they would have 10 times $165 because that's the co-pay for tier three, 90-day supply. So they would have to pay that 165 four times a year, times 10 drugs. That's $5,000. So theoretically, they could hit that out-of-pocket maximum. Realistically, I don't know anyone who has a prescription load anywhere remotely like that. And so when you talk, it's sort of like trying to assure you with a negative. If you say to me, will the sun come up in the morning? I can't say absolutely, positively. What do we know about the sun tomorrow morning? Can I tell you, well, it's pretty darn likely it's coming up. Let's hope so. So what I can tell you about the out-of-pocket maximums is that in any given group health plan, like ours, with 250, 300 members, no one hits it over 10 years. No one. Is it possible for someone to hit it? Yes. That's why there is a maximum because when you have that highly unusual and extreme set of circumstances where, I mean, the big co-pays are the pharmaceuticals, the inpatient surgical, and the outpatient surgical. So if you had a whole bunch of prescriptions and a whole bunch of surgical procedures in a given year, theoretically, you could hit that out-of-pocket maximum. And then it would stop. You wouldn't pay anymore. But that's just not going to happen. Nobody writes health insurance these days planning that the out-of-pocket maximums are actually going to be attained. It's just not done because these out-of-pocket maximums are, you know, just prohibitive. People don't hit them.
Thank you.
Mike James, 382 High Street. I'm a citizen member on the general government subcommittee meeting, and I don't know if it's been pointed out or not, but this got an unfavorable recommendation from subcommittee, which was just held. And a couple of things that are kind of important that need to be brought up is, as the town manager had explained, that this benchmark had a $190 million shortfall this last year. They've had to make up $70 million, and that's why we have increased deductibles and premiums, and it still has a $120 million shortfall. So there's another shoe still to drop on this for corrections coming up this next year. And I understand completely, the goal here is to try and be able to do a 60-40 split so that the town is paying 60% and the employees are paying 40%. Purpose is to be able to draw more employees. The employees that we have here, though, there was a large group in the meeting, they did not like this. When they were given a choice of either going with this, going with the benchmark, or staying with the plan that they have right now at 50%, there was a handful of people that raised their hand and said they wanted to stay with the status quo. Nobody raised their hand for the benchmark. And I think if you want to have the draw, and I understand you want to be able to say 60%, we're paying 60%, and that is something that we can draw more employees into us with. But if we do something that is really upsetting the employees we already have here, then we may have an exodus that we have to deal with besides trying to draw more employees. They would rather, it seems like, they would rather stay at the status quo and let us explore going to benchmark next year. And I think that's usable just for the numbers, just so you understand here. If you stay status quo, there's going to be an increase to the town of $228,000 at 50%. Status quo, 50%. If you go benchmark, 60%, there's an increase of $347,000. So the town will actually save money by doing status quo, 50%, and then exploring what happens next year. Because benchmark might get uglier next year with this $120 million shortfall. Also, what you're voting on tonight isn't the 60-40, 45-55, 50-50 split. All you're deciding is whether you want to All you're deciding is whether you want to go with benchmark or status quo. Thank you.
I think it needs to be absolutely clear to the council and to the employees as well. If you kick the can down the road and hope for better things next year, you are engaging in that age-old activity of whistling past the graveyard. We already know, for a fact, that the co-pay and deductible changes that the GIC implemented this year, and which are now the benchmark plan. The benchmark plan is the plan which the GIC offers to its employees, which is the most heavily enrolled. That's the one that cities and towns can offer. That's why they call it the benchmark, okay? That benchmark plan was substantially increased in co-pays and deductibles this year, because the GIC has a deficit, i.e., their rates aren't high enough, to yield a $150 to $190 million deficit. They asked the legislature to bail them out, and the legislature said, "No. Why should the taxpayers pay for that? That's employee health insurance. The employee should be paying for it." So the GIC passed all these co-pay and deductible increases, and all the state employees will now pay them. And on top of that, they're going to pay a 9.5 percent premium increase in addition to all this. By comparison, we're asking our employees to take these co-pays and deductibles, get a 10 percent increase in their contributory share, and on a family plan, save $3,000, and on an individual plan, save $1,500. Now, if anybody thinks this is going to get better next year, you really need to think long and hard, because everything that the GIC Commission did this year to introduce all these co-pays and deductibles only wiped out half of their deficit. Next year, more co-pays and deductibles are coming, and if you want to implement the benchmark plan next year, you're going to be looking at even higher co-pays and deductibles. And maybe not with the associated savings that you're getting this year, because it is the nature of healthcare underwriting, that a co-pay deductible taken sooner rather than later yields a bigger decrement in premium, a reduction in premium. So you wait a year, you're going to have to do more. Folks, there is no getting around it. Here is where health insurance is going, and there isn't anybody in this room or in this country that's going to stop it. More co-pays, higher co-pays, higher deductibles, more cost sharing between the employee and the employer. That is the future, absolutely, positively, without a doubt. 10 percent premium increases per year are not sustainable to this town's budget. It is not possible. You will have layoffs. You will lose employees over this if you allow this to continue. Do I like the fact that we have to introduce these co-pays and deductibles? Absolutely not. But if it helps, I'm on a plan that has a deductible three... I'm sorry, five times higher than this deductible. Five times higher. And if you use those tools I talked about, flexible spending accounts, the reimbursement program that we have, which is very rich, you can shield yourself from most of that. And you can live with this very easily, and you still get all those savings in the premium. This is a unique and rare moment in time and an opportunity for the town of Southbridge, and I don't think you're going to necessarily see this again next year. You might, but the chances are you might not. But what I can tell you is it's here now. It's absolutely here now.
I have a growing list. Councilor Clements?
While I can appreciate the numbers in terms of what the town currently has, the 50-50 split may not be a very good contributory part from our side of things. However, you have a program that is very beneficial to you, obviously. You have very minimal, if any at all, on your co-pays, very minimal contribution from your part, and you have fairly high premiums to reflect that. As has been pointed out, there'll be a 10 percent increase. And for those of you wondering what that means, a few of the numbers have been pointed out, not just the $228,000, because how does that really reflect individually? Well, basically, some status quo numbers, as we've said, an individual plan could go up as much as $411, or if we choose to change, could go up $45. A family plan, which I have heard much negativity about, the family plan premiums, will go up as much as $1,069 per family. Divide that by 12, and you know what your extra monthly... Oh, we've got another, you know, $80 a month, $90 a month. Or it could go up 118. The goal was that the plans weren't going to go up at all. The goal was that we'd hope that our providers would come back with numbers that were either going to be zero increases or savings, actual savings, reductions. The best we could get from them was this 1 percent versus 10.1. This is... It really is an interesting quandary that we're in. We have 250, 300 employees on this plan. Seems like a lot of people. We have 17,000 citizens in this community. Many, most, the majority of the taxpayers and such are on some sort of private plan. If you take these plans and compare them to what the private sector is paying, you will undoubtedly see that almost every single, unless you are working for, I guess, the best, most rich company out there perhaps, has got some sort of contribution going on. I look at this as that we're coming into the right moment where our employees are just like every other employee out there in Massachusetts or anywhere else across the country. There has been a shift, and you have to take responsibility. One of the things that has been explained to us is the cost of our insurance is so high because of the claims that we have. It is very easy to pick up that phone when your child's got a sore throat, or you've got an itch in your ear, and make an appointment when your co-pay is $5, maybe even $10. You probably don't think twice about making that appointment and going to the doctor. However, if your co-pay is $25 or $35, you might say, "Jeez, how about I gargle with some salt water? Maybe I take a throat laceration, I take some aspirin for the fever", and we wait, because it's been proven that even regular ear infections, and the overuse of antibiotics is a very bad thing, especially with our children, perhaps the symptoms will subside. Should they not? We still have the option, at an affordable rate, to go see our doctor. That's great about this country. You have good insurance, or you have insurance of any kind, you can get some sort of medical care. And if you don't, you can walk into a hospital or clinic or whatever and get it too. So I look at this plan, and I say, "What are we talking here?". I would like to ask the rest of the employees. We had a great turnout tonight. We had a lot of retirees who I think were not quite sure of what we were proposing, because this plan was not going to affect the retirees the way it will affect the average active employee. So we had quite a few retirees that showed up tonight. A big majority, I think, of that group, there were retirees, and they asked a lot of good questions, and they will have concerns as we move forward if we decide to go this route and choose between perhaps Fallon or the Maya Blue Cross plan. And that will be another meeting where we will welcome input. But currently, you're looking... Ask a family who can save $100, $150 a month in premiums, and they're going to give their kid, you know, an aspirin and make sure they're healthy. Obviously, if they have a problem, they're going to go, and they're going to have coverage. Maybe they'll end up with a bill that they'll have to, you know, make a payment plan on, but the majority of the people are going to be more mindful of their healthcare and what they can do to contribute to saving that $3,000 a year. I don't think we're asking too much of the town employees. I don't think we're asking too... You know, our retirees, if you stay a town employee and you do well, you're going to get a 50-50 split down the road. You're going to get more insurance benefits when you retire. Municipal employees do pretty well. I just think that we need to be cognizant of the real world, and that everyone needs to provide a little bit on theirself, whether it's maintaining their health better, so they don't have to go to the doctor, or just, you know, kicking it in a little bit extra. And for that, we can move on and take the vote and move on to a 60-40 and give better benefits, so we don't lose employees. And we will, as a town, take on the extra share. I will vote for taking on that extra $320,000, as long as it's looking like everyone's doing what they need to do. Everyone needs to take some responsibility for their healthcare. I think this is a way to be responsible. We can't just expect everything to be free and there being no penalty. Your penalty is a $3,000 increase, a $1,000 increase, a potential $2,000 savings if we do the 60-40. That's $3,000 a year. I find it hard that you'll hit the $3,000 deductible. So I think what we're trying... What we're proposing here is very fair, it's logical, and it's what we should really do as a community, for the future of this community and our employees. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Councilor Steves?
Thank you. I've got a couple of quick questions for the town manager. One is, back downstairs in General Government, you mentioned that right now about half of the employees are members of our current insurance. Do you have any idea of how many are likely... Do you have any feeling for how many would be likely to sign up if we went to 60-40?
We budgeted $175,000 to pay the town's share of new enrollees, which I believe works out to about 13 new family plans. We don't really have any way to know.
Yeah.
But that's our estimate.
And also, if we were to go for the status quo, the way you've got the numbers lined out, where would the money likely come from?
If we were to go with the what, I'm sorry?
With the status quo. That 470,000...
Because we've already budgeted for the 1 percent increase...
Right.
For the benchmark plan.
Right.
And we put the extra $175,000 in.
Right.
If we went with the status quo, the town, and we stayed 50-50...
Yeah.
The town would actually be able to take $100,000 out of the budget. The 320 drops to... It's all in that chart, but the 320 drops to 228. So we're actually able to take $100,000 back out. But that's the 60-40. That 10 percent shift in premium...
Right.
Is a big number. So if you take that... If we stay with... I mean, I'm presuming that the council wouldn't consider, under any circumstances, a status quo and a shift to 60-40, because I don't know how we do that, because that's impossible, I think. But if you went... If you kept the status quo renewal, and you took the 10 percent increase, you'd actually be... And you stayed 50-50, you'd actually be able to take money out of the budget. You'd be able to put it toward whatever you want to spend $100,000 on. Because instead of 320, you'd have... You'd need 228.
Okay.
But the employees would lose what I think is an historic opportunity to get this 10 percent shift, and that's a stated goal of the council, so... And we would still be left with our retention issues, and I don't see that going away. And I think we would have missed an... No, I've said what I wanted to say. You'd miss an historic opportunity. But one thing I wanted to know, Mr. Chairman, because I think there's a big misnomer evident here about these co-pays and deductibles. You already have co-pays and deductibles. I mean, we already have them. This isn't something new. Let me give you a comparison. If you're on the current HMO network, Blue New England, there's no deductible, family or individual. But if you're on the PPO, these are our current plans, then you have $150 deductible, individual, 300 family. That's what you have right now. If you go to the benchmark plan with Blue Cross, then the 150 individual deductible goes to 300, the 300 family goes to 900. If you go to the Fallon benchmark plan, the 150 individual deductible goes to 300, and the 300 family goes to 600. So they're doubling. But for that $150 or $300, worst case, you're saving $1,500 or $3,000. If you look at the medical pocket... Medical out-of-pocket maximum, if you're on the HMO, there isn't one, because that's a managed plan. It's a closed panel plan. You can't go anywhere unless your doctor sends you, and you've got to stay in that network. But if you're on the PPO, you've already got a $2,500 individual out-of-pocket max and a $5,000 family. You have it right now. It's not new. It's right now. If you go to the Maya benchmark, the Blue Cross, it stays $25,000. If you go to the Fallon benchmark, it doubles to $5,000, $10,000. But you already have them. And again, for the change in an out-of-pocket, which you'll never hit, you're saving all that premium we've already described. Your primary care physician, you go to the doctor's office, your primary care physician right now under the current plan, you pay $10 for the office visit. Under the Blue Cross, you'll pay 20, and under the Fallon, you'll pay 15. Another important one is the emergency room. Under your current plans, you visit the emergency room, you pay $100 co-pay. Under the Blue Cross plan, you pay 150, and under the Fallon, it stays the same at 100. So when you start looking at the changes in these co-pays, it's really not so dreadful as it's being represented. It's not that bad at all. But when you add in there the fact that you can take that reimbursement from the town for that inpatient or outpatient second surgical event and get reimbursed, and you can establish a flexible spending account, which most of the world is doing now, and you can shelter some of this cost with the federal government's money, I just... It's just... I've been doing these kinds of plans for 40 years in municipalities, and this is the best I've ever seen anywhere, in terms of in the employees' best interests. I have never seen anything as good as this, in terms of saving employees' money and asking for very little in return. This is a... Again, this is a rare opportunity. The problem is, I think, is it's not very well understood, because a lot of complexity is hitting everybody very fast, and people have not had time to properly assimilate it. And let me assure the council and the employees, this is not something that anybody did intentionally. It is a product of one thing. The GIC had that great big deficit. The legislature said, "We're not bailing you out." They didn't announce their co-pay and deductible changes for the benchmark plan until four weeks ago. And in those four weeks, all the carriers had to scramble to develop their premiums. At 5 o'clock this afternoon, I got another whole set of premiums over the computer from Maya. At 5 o'clock this afternoon, not even on these spreadsheets yet, I think we're now... Mindy helped me here, but I think we're up to a fourth or fifth set of premium from the two competitors. Tomorrow morning at 9, I got a meeting with one of them, and at 3 o'clock, I got a meeting with the other one. And I'm going to give each one of the other guys information, and I'm going to say, "Beat it. See if we can get our employees a better deal and our taxpayers." That's how dynamic the situation is. And I understand that this is incredibly complex, and it's hugely difficult for everyone to assimilate, but here's what we're up against. Our backs got put to the wall by the GIC, not by anybody else. Not by the carriers, not by me, not by the council, not by the employees. It was just the way it came down this year. But on May 1, this town will renew its health insurance plan, one way or the other. And on May 1, if we are not able to get through this process, this benchmark plan, then we will go up 10 percent. We will. Because on May 1, we've got to have health insurance, and if we don't do the benchmark, we'll go up 10 percent. And then on June 1, we'll go up... We'll maintain that 10 percent. And maybe there'll be an opportunity to put this plan into effect later, and maybe there won't. I'm not... Prelimarily, Maya and Fallon said they would give us the 10 percent renewal on May and June, and then they'd go to the benchmark plan on July 1, preliminarily. But I don't know that to be the case. But from my way of thinking, why spend all that money for two months with a 10 percent renewal on a $4 million base? You're talking about a big, big number for those two months, just because we can't assimilate this information quickly enough and do it logically in all our collective best interests. It's good for the taxpayers. It's good for the employees. I'm a little frustrated, because I don't know what more I can do.
Councilor Vecchia?
If we voted no, just to reclarify, we would save money on the budget, because it would save 50-50.
No. This decision that you have before you tonight has nothing to do with the 50-50 or the 60-40. That's another decision you're going to make later on the budget. That's a budget decision. It's got nothing to do with this. The decision tonight is strictly to allow the implementation of the benchmark plan or not. That's all.
Through the chairman, the town treasurer, Mindy, I have a question for you. Thank you. I trust this lady. I've worked with her for years on the insurance. What would you do? What would you do? You work here plus you have the insurance here, right? You have our insurance?
I do have our insurance.
Okay. So, what plan would you pick?
Will it help if I leave the room? I don't know.
No.
No, but I've known her, I've worked on insurance for many years.
As a healthy person, who I don't use the healthcare a lot, I think that a benchmark plan, I, those copays wouldn't affect me in a big way, but the premium could.
So, keep going. So, you wouldn't like the benchmark plan?
I think the copays on the benchmark plan are reasonable, and I believe that they are where most municipalities and communities are going.
So, if you were sitting here on the town council, how would you vote tonight?
I would vote to implement or to adopt the sections of the law.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm all set.
Mr. Buxton?
She told us the whole yes.
Mr. Chairman, a quick comment, Kevin Buxton, 28, MSF. Not too long ago, town manager negotiated a contract with a department head, and one of the stipulations the department head said was he wanted his health insurance paid 75-25. It went around this table days, quite a few times. We pay 50-50, that's the way it goes. I believe he ended up getting what he wanted because he said he was going to save $200,000 on snowplow. He didn't last too long. I don't know if he ever saved us that money. Health insurance is not my forte, but if we're paying, if the town's paying 60%, employees are paying 40%, time goes on, prices go up. As prices go up, we go up, they go up. We go up, they go up. Because we're paying them more the percentage, our growth is going to be different. I urged councils to try to stay with this 50%. And by all means, if you can find a better insurance company that the employees are happy with, and it's no difference to the town as far as cost, and everything's 50-50, I think that's where we try to stay. Because otherwise, we go 60, 40, well, next time, maybe it's 65, 45. It's a slippery slope. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Carrasco?
Yes, I just want to make it clear that I understand that we're trying to be competitive with the real world, but the real world doesn't give cost of living increase every year. So, I mean, that has to be considered also in our decision because going up 60-40, 60-40, and then giving them a 2.5, a 2.0, three points, whatever you want to give them every year for raises, when the real world, you stay whatever, you're going to get the 50-50, you're going to get the 60-40, but that raise, you ain't getting a raise. Most jobs, most communities out there, most employers are not giving raises. And I've been, since last year, since I've been here, I'm not, I'm not for giving people raises just because they work in municipal government. The normal person doesn't get a raise, and we're going to continue to give people raises. I understand this is, this is a hard decision moving forward, but we, and I know for a lot of it, it's going to be bargaining. You know, that's part of the bargaining union, it's in the unions and negotiations. Well, yeah, okay, we do this this year, 60-40, and then most unions come back, they're going to stay 60-40, but they're going to want 3% increases. So, it's going to cost us even more, on the other hand. Right now, I understand it was our goal to try to make it competitive, and, but I don't, I'm having trouble understanding how we're going to retain employees when the first thing they're going to look at is the deductibles. Because that's what people look at when they look at health insurance, they look at the deductible. How much is it going to cost me to take my son that unfortunately he gets an ear infection four or five times a year in the summer because he likes the water? You know, how much is that going to cost me on top of prescriptions? So, I just, again, I know we want to stay with the real world. I know most employers give 75-25, 60-40, 65-35, however it may be. But not every employer is giving a 2% raise, 3% raise every year. That's all I got to say.
Councilor Clemens?
Well, again, to be clear, we are not voting tonight on actually changing the contributory amount. Tonight's vote is strictly on whether or not we look at another type of insurance situation, which ultimately, immediately could change us by $228,000 savings to the community and $228,000 savings to the employees. Is this, through you to Mr. Pagos?
The council's vote, it's important to note, does not implement the benchmark plan. The council's vote allows the benchmark plan to be implemented later or not, but the town manager has the authority to make that final decision. If you don't vote affirmatively, then I don't have that opportunity to make that decision later, once these numbers all settle. So, you're enabling implementation, you're not directing it. But I would take it as town manager, if you enable it and the numbers get, stay at least where they are, maybe they'll get better, but if they stay at least where they are, then I would in fact implement it.
Right, but I'm going back to the 60-40, that's a separate issue.
That's a separate discussion that the council has to take as part of the budget.
Correct.
If you decide you want to stay at 50-50, then you will remove from the budget the funding that supports the 60-40 split.
Mm-hmm. Right. Okay. And again, you've mentioned some copays. Currently, $10 for ear infection, going up to $15 or $20. So, you're talking $5 or $10 more per doctor visit with a savings on a family plan of $1,000 a year. You can have a lot of ear infections. So, thank you.
I just have a couple of quick questions. And I was downstairs for the majority of that meeting, although I wasn't in the room because we were standing room only, and I was standing in a stairwell, close as I got. In this scenario of going with the benchmark process, are there any prohibitions in terms of a municipal employee, in terms of where they can go for primary care, hospital, et cetera, et cetera?
No, the networks, the Blue Cross network, irrespective of plans, is the same network. The Fallon network is the same network. The networks don't vary because of the plan you pick.
So, our primary care physician is not going to have to be dictated to be at Harrington? It could be wherever we so desire?
Correct.
My understanding originally from the initial discussions, and I know I heard it asked several times, but just for clarification purposes, retirees are not affected?
If we go with the Fallon plan, then we lose the Blue Cross Medex Senior Plan, but it's replaced by a Fallon Medex Plan that's identical, it just has a different name. But that Fallon Medex Plan costs $10 a month more to the employee, so it's $120 increase per year and $120 increase per year to the town. That's all factored into all these numbers.
What is the role and purview of the IAC?
IAC, under the statute, is presented with all this information, and I'll be doing that this Thursday night. Then the IAC makes a recommendation. They can recommend favorably or unfavorably, or they can make none at all, but the law requires that they be presented with the information and given an opportunity to make a recommendation.
Would it not behoove us to have, had that happened before it comes here?
It would if it were possible. The problem is, we're up against that May 1 deadline. We're simultaneously unable to provide all the numbers to the IAC and to the, potentially to the PEC, Public Employee Committee, and the union leadership because the numbers keep changing. Now, what I've said to the carriers is we're going to meet with them tomorrow morning, tomorrow afternoon. They have Wednesday to produce final numbers. After that, the numbers will not change anymore. We'll then take those numbers if they change, I don't know if they will, and we will put them back into these exhibits, the new numbers, and make sure all of this is accurate going forward for Thursday night. The benchmark plan has a schedule of events that have to occur if we're going to implement it, which don't involve the council, but it's a number of steps. And one of those is the formation of a PEC, a Public Employee Committee, different from the IAC. The PEC has one representative from each bargaining unit, which I then present to, and they have the right to negotiate where 50% of the town's savings for the first year will go. Since there are no savings, there is nothing to negotiate. And so, what I will be asking the PEC to do, I will be asking the unions to do, is to waive their right to the formation of that committee because there is nothing for it to do. If the union declines to do that, then we will have to go through the process, which will be obviously a bit of a sham because I'll have to say there's nothing to discuss, but they could make it go the full 30 days. The result of that is that the town and the employees will pay the 10% increase on May 1, and then again on June 1 because I have a requirement to notify the carrier 60 days prior to the implementation date. We are already inside the 60-day window for May 1, but I have assurances from both carriers that they will put the benchmark plan into effect on May 1 if I can notify them this week or next week. That requires a council vote tonight, and it requires the unions waiving their rights to that 30-day negotiation sometime in the next week or two. Failing both events happening, the town and the employees will have a 10% premium increase on May 1, and more than likely, June 1 as well because I can't get back to the council for two more weeks, and since you will not have voted, I can't start the process. So, I can't notify the unions, I can't form the PEC. So, basically, what we did is we just cost ourselves a month, and so, at that point, I don't think I could, I don't think we can make June 1 either. So, we get hit with two 10% increases for two months. Now, after that point, if the council were to vote, the unions could effectively block it for July 1 or August 1 if they wanted to. So, this could go on for quite a while if some, if a union decided they wanted to prevent implementation by requiring the full negotiating process. And again, the result of that is nothing but everybody pays more.
You had stated earlier, an affirmative vote on this agenda item essentially does not bind us to going with the benchmark, but more so puts the ball in your court as manager to decide.
Yeah, because of the charter in Southbridge, you serve as the chief legislative authority, and I, the manager, serves as the chief executive authority. Under the statute, the legislative authority, you have to adopt the provisions of the statute to allow the executive authority to implement it. So, it's a two-step process. I can't implement without your vote.
Would a negative vote prohibit council from implementing the benchmark plan next month or so forth?
It would not. You could implement it at another time. You'd have to restart the process. The carriers, however, would have to be queried as to their willingness to give you the same premium they've already given you. Generally speaking, premium quotations are good for 30 days, and if you fail to react to them, then they re-quote. Sometimes they'll hold it for 60 days. So, if the council voted no, and then you brought this up again in a couple of months, you'd be free to implement it if the carrier said okay mid-plan year. Now, the carriers may also say no, and then you'd be barred from doing it until next year.
Okay.
That's not a conversation I've had with them because my hope is the council will decide or not.
Okay. And my last question, if I understood, if I heard you correctly downstairs through the sea of people, if we were to stay status quo, the speculation is that more likely than not, next year, trying to do this would be more cost prohibitive than doing so now.
Here's the way it works. Right now, the benchmark plan is defined as this plan design, this set of copays and deductibles. If you implement this, and then the GIC Commission turns around and increases the copays and deductibles to wipe out the rest of that deficit that they're still carrying, then in order to implement those copays and deductibles next year, you have to go back through this process to increase them. However, if you haven't already adopted the benchmark plan at the current levels, and you were to adopt it next year, you adopt that whole cloth, whatever it is, which is, as I say, I suspect going to be much harder because the copays and deductibles are going to go up. The one thing I can absolutely positively assure you of, because it hasn't happened in the history of America, the copays and deductibles are never, ever going down. They're going up. They're not ever going to go down. So, I can tell you that.
Okay. So, then, we know that scenario, but if we were to enact the benchmark plan a year, two years, three years, however further down the road, if the council and the unions and the manager and so forth felt it was no longer a viable option, reverting back to what we have now would also not be viable, correct? It would be far too cost prohibitive, if I understood you correctly.
Yeah, I think if you don't contemporize, contemporize means change your copays and deductibles. If you don't do that, then you get a 10% increase this year. If those large claims that we've got running right now, nine, 10, 11 of them in excess of $75,000 a year, if those don't settle out, and it's highly unlikely they will in one year, then you're looking at another large increase next year, could be double-digit again, but that's compounded on top of the 10. And what I'm saying to the council is you've already had something in the range of 27, 26 over the last three years. You keep going at this rate, and this is going to destroy your budget. I mean, you're going, the only way you're going with full health insurance in a couple of years is to lay off the employees enough to afford the insurance for the ones that are left. That's what you're going to be doing. Remember, this whole budget is predicated on six employee positions being sacrificed this year. This would not be possible without the loss of those positions. That's six jobs this year, I'm sorry, five jobs this year. So, what are you looking at next year if those copays and deductibles are even worse? I don't know. Or, if you don't, and you get another 10% increase next year, what are you looking at? Bad things, whatever they are, it's all bad.
So, the last thing I have to say is not so much a question, just more so a statement. I think, you know, it's been pointed out, and it's very factual, statistically certainly accurate, that so long as, if you're a healthy individual, especially if you don't have a family or kids, if you're kind of doing this individually, this could be of great savings for you. The problem is, however, if that's not you, if you're older, if you are ill, if you have several kids, so forth, this could be very much so not advantageous. And with, so my biggest concern is just incidences of various diseases and illnesses and injuries is always on the rise, especially here in Massachusetts, even, you know, cancer rate here compared to many other parts of the country in particular are abnormally high. So, I think that's a concern because it can happen, you know, I certainly know it can happen when you're 25 years old, it can happen when you're 85, but, so that's something I think that I need to consider, and I think others too. I have Mr. Murray.
Good evening, Mike Murray-Linley. Some of the things that I'm hearing tonight are somewhat true and somewhat not true. In the tools that were given, two out of the three options are already in place, so it's not a new incentive for an employee. They now seem to know about reimbursement program, which was not well communicated to them. And then there's the tax saving plan. Those things are already there, that's not new. So, to kind of represent it as part of a toolkit is kind of misleading. We were also told downstairs that there's basically high claims, small number of people, and those small number of people will probably diminish. and those small number of people will probably diminish in, in numbers through getting better or getting off the plan, for, for lack of other words. So those people are affecting the 257 people who are on the plan. And you're looking at a $1,000 increase of the status quo, and the town manager says this is a savings and this is that, but everyone downstairs is looking at that and saying, "Okay, I'm going to pay $1,000, or I'm going to pay $900 in deductible, increased co-pays, specialist co-pays that went up $45 per visit. What difference does it make? It looks like the Benchline Plan will cost more." So the 60-40 split sounds like it's a savings. The case has certainly been not made downstairs for previously, the general government subcommittee that I attended, and there was a third vote downstairs that no one's mentioned. I actually made the motion to ask the entire room, would they rather see the town council not vote on this till hard numbers were presented? And the room, everyone in the room raised their hands. That was not told to you by previous speakers. That took place. There's a timeline. There's ways to do this. There's a meeting on Thursday, apparently, with changing numbers from the insurance companies, and the town manager has yet to be, have time to look at those, is having more meetings tomorrow, but yet you're asked to vote on this tonight. And the employees don't know what they're getting, because they're changing, and you certainly don't know what he's going to find out when he looks at numbers tonight and tomorrow. So I, I would like, you know, to someone up here to consider a motion, because there are certainly ways to get this done in the timeline, as, as mentioned, to give the employees of this town the respect and the knowledge of what you want to do here, because I will speak in my own opinion, it's coming across as what you're doing to them, not for them. Retention was mentioned downstairs, and there were people who said, "People are leaving? Do you know what Bay Pass split is? It's 80-20. Police left for Milbury. Do you know what their split is? 70-30." So retention, if this was the entire reason to do it, I challenge that, and I further think that if you talk about kicking the can down the road, not only will retention be bothered, but recruitment will be bothered. You have employees here, 15, 20 years? Yeah, they're probably going to stay. Your new employees, one, two, three years? They see this, they see the cost, they see, well, this is their idea of helping. Without making the case before a vote was done, you're not building trust. And I, I think that recruitment might be a problem as well as retention. So also, in, in saying that there was a timeline in May 1 and whatever else was here, because it's hard to hear in the back of the room, this council has the ability to call a special meeting, meeting of the whole, to address this in a timely fashion. So to say that this has to be voted on tonight is, again, somewhat misleading. And I agree. One more minute?
Yep, if the council is, is there a motion, a motion to extend? All those in favor?
I'll be brief. This community is known for its asthma rates. It has a stance on cancer, and it has fairly high cancer rates. An MS has also become a very big number in this community. So for people who are facing some very real factors, and not the 13 people with the highest claims of all, but the ones who are becoming forward, I would, again, ask you to consider these factors, that the cost of deductibles and out-of-pocket is not the way for retention, recruitment, when you can have a special meeting to address these things, when the employees don't know the final figures. I think you would have a tremendous amount of goodwill if a motion was made to delay this vote till afterwards, till you present it to the employees, and you may come back with something they like. And then this will all go away, and you'll have a tremendous amount of support. But the way this has started, the whole process, not telling them, doing this, it's created some bad will, and I honestly think that you have the methods to wait on this, and I strongly hope that one of you, in, in the respect for employees, make that motion. Thank you.
I have Councilor Steve's first.
First off, to the town manager, if we were to delay this and, and ended up having to pay the 10% hike, what would it actually cost us for May and June?
If I'm doing numbers right in my head, and Mindy, if I mess this up, let me know, but I think we're talking, the 10% increase for the month of May would cost a family about $100, and a town about $100 per plan, and a individual about half that, about $50. And that would continue, because we know it's about $1,100 increase over the course of a year, and so that's about $100 a month. So if it were, if we had to implement this on May, if we had to implement the 10% increase on May 1, that's going to be about $100, again on June, and, but the risk, that's not the big risk. That's, that's a given, that's a known, that's not the risk. The risk is that the two carriers will not honor a July 1 implementation of the Benchmark Plan unless, and I don't know that for certain. Do we know that for certain yet, Mindy? If they would let us do the 10% increase on May 1 and then do the Benchmark on July 1, they, Maya would. All right. So our options would be down to one carrier, which does, I mean, it carries the implication that I can't play the two off each other anymore. Maya would know that they are now the only game in town, which I can guarantee you, that means these numbers won't get better, because as soon as they know that, no improvement to the numbers, and it would cost each family probably a couple hundred bucks.
So for, for the towns, then, our total bill would be somewhere in the $50,000 range for the next two months?
Let's see, if I take that 280,000 and I divide, no, probably more than the $40,000 range.
If I can just add to that, we've been talking about 257 employees on the plan. There are also 77 retiree members on the plan. We have not been using that number tonight. So besides the 257, you have to add almost, you know, another 77 plans to those numbers.
And would we actually, if we were to delay this and do a special meeting like, like Mike suggested for, say, next Monday, would there still be enough time to do things with, with Maya and Fallon?
Maya has indicated that they would agree to put the Benchmark Plan in on July 1. That means they would have to be notified. The council had voted, the employee negotiation process, if the unions insisted upon it, would be conducted.
Yeah.
And all that would have to be transmitted to Maya by May 1. If the council does not vote tonight, I don't see how that's possible. It's, it's not possible. Because remember, the, I have a 30-day process.
Yeah, I get that.
And so you go from May 1 back to April 1. April 1 is next week.
Yeah.
So if I don't notify Maya, now Maya insists on the 60-day notification, Fallon does not, but if you knock Fallon out of the box, so that I only have Maya left, then I got the 60-day notification, which means I can't make July 1, which means you're probably going to be stuck with this until next year. So you're probably getting hit with a 10%.
Okay.
Again, nobody created this set of circumstances. This is all because of what happened at the GIC level, but it is what we're dealing with.
I'll say, counselor?
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Ryan Rutger. I'm a 19-year veteran, or 19-year tenured employee with the police department. Mr. Chairman, you had made a mention about the IAC, which is the Insurance Advisory Commission, so I stand before you as acting co-chair. So I can tell you, and I'll be brief, so there are three issues I want to raise. Currently, where we stand right now with the Insurance Advisory Commission, we're not in favor of this right now. Now, that's not to say we won't be in the future, and the reason for that is, the numbers are changing by the hour. We were given a series of, of figures last week. That has now changed just today. So I have not had the chance, nor has the rest of the committee, to review those numbers and bring it back to the body. They're changing by the hour. The other point I want to mention is that we have an officer in our department, which I'm not going to mention by name, he is on the state GIC Benchmark. He was just informed that he can no longer go to University of Massachusetts for medical care, and he has to change his physician. He is extremely upset, but that's the predicament he's in, and I'm afraid that's where we're heading. And the other point, and I said I'd be brief, is that 60-40 split is not for all employees. That 60-40 split is for only the HMO. So I understand why it's there, but there's a portion, I believe, unless I'm wrong, you can correct me, that that...
That's incorrect.
So you're telling me the 60-40 will apply to PPO members as well?
That's not the proposal we put together here.
Is there going to be a change for PPO members?
I'm sorry?
If, if the proposal of a 60-40, is that for both HMO and PPO, is that correct?
The proposal we put together here, I believe, is 60-40 for everybody. I have to check that, but the PPO has very, very few members in any event.
Okay, I need you to check that for me, because based on some of the information I saw last week, I believe there was a discrepancy.
Remember, even if it's the case that it's 60-40 on the HMO only, in the PPA pool, the vast majority of the few people that are in it are pre-65 non-Medicare eligible retirees. They're going to stay at 50-50 no matter what. So when you take those folks out of the PPO, you might only have five or six or seven people left. Now, if those people don't get the shift to 60-40, that's because the PPO plan is itself very expensive to begin with.
I understand that.
So the 200 or 300 employees that are on the HMO will get the 60-40 split.
Correct, but I just want to clarify with you on, on that particular issue.
Your friend who lost UMass medical privileges has got nothing to do with the Benchmark Plan. It's got to do with, of the 16 plans the GIC offers, which one is he in? Because that plan, that carrier, could be Fallon, could be Harvard, the carrier cut out the availability in the tiering of the plan that your friend is in. It's got nothing to do with the Benchmark. The Benchmark does not exclude any particular hospital. That has to do with tiering of a particular plan. So that isn't, if you pick a plan that doesn't allow you to go to UMass, well, let me put it this way, no plan doesn't let you go, but it says you get better lower co-pays if you go to this tier hospital than if you go to that tier, and then it's a conscious choice. Do you want to go to Mass General, or do you want to go to Tufts?
Could the dilemma he's in potentially affect some of us in the future? That's the question that needs to be answered.
It's part of this whole learning curve of learning how to use this new kind of insurance.
So specifically, Mr. Chairman, it was on behalf of the IAC. We are not in favor of this at this time. The numbers just keep changing. Now, we do have a meeting on Thursday with the town manager, so hopefully we, we can make some progress there. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Vecchio?
I have one quick question. The insurance hasn't increased 10%. The insurance cost?
It will increase on May 1 10%.
Wait a minute. This budget is increased 10% because the contribution change is 60-40. But if it stayed 50-50, there would be no increase. The insurance would be the same as the prior year.
When you say the budget, you talk about the town budget?
Yeah, I'm talking about...
Right. The town budget figure that you're currently seeing, the $320,000 would first go down, okay? Because the 320 contains $175,000 for new plans, which would probably only happen if we go to 60-40. Then it would go back up to cover the 10% increase. So it would go from 320 to 242, I think it is.
Well, my point is this.
228.
The difference between last year's budget and this year's budget is not the cost, is that you increase the change to 60-40. That's why it went up 10%, and that's the only reason why it went up 10%.
No.
Well, if you take 10%...
No.
You take 10%...
That's not true.
Wait a minute, I'm just trying to explain something to you. 2015, it was $2,929,700. That's the town side, right? You add 10% of that, and you come up with the 3250 that you got this year.
You can't do it by grossing the budget from last year to this year. You have to take the new premium for each specific plan, times all the enrollees in that specific plan.
Well, should that figure be in here and not this figure, 3 points?
It's right here on the, on the exhibit I gave you. It's right there. The premium...
I don't care about that. I'm talking about right here in this budget, that what you gave me.
You cannot, let me say it again. The only way to establish the health insurance budget for the town is to take the premium for the specific plan.
Okay, okay.
Multiply it times the number of people in the plan.
I understand completely what you're saying, but the figure you got here is because this, this...
No, that is not true.
Well, it's true if you look at the figure, if you look at the figure, it's exactly 10% more this year.
That, that's a coincidence. That is not the way it's calculated.
I'm ready to vote.
Please, don't say it and ask me to agree. I will not agree. It is not an accurate statement.
It's exactly 10% more than last year.
It's got nothing to do with the 10% increase in the contributory share.
That's what it looks like, okay? Thank you.
That's what it looks like.
Yeah, that's, that's what it looks like. Thank you.
Remember, it's a 20% shift in the budget, not a 10. The employees aren't paying 10. We lose 10.
I understand where you're coming from.
And then we're paying 10. That's 20.
Let's not play, let's not, I don't want to get in an argument with you, okay? The budget is increased 10% because the shift, you shifted to 60-40 from 50-50. That's what it looks like, okay? I don't want to, I don't want to talk about it. I would like to vote, to be honest with you.
Thank you. Counselor Manor?
Chair, through you, to the town manager. What's the absolute latest that you have to get back to? I, I mean, to Maya and Fallon, what's the absolute latest date? Because Mr. Murray does bring up a good point. There was a large group of people, and I am sure that if we held a special meeting, there would be a larger group of people wanting to discuss this. And this, this was, it, it did feel to me like it was rushed downstairs, you know? There wasn't enough time for everybody to speak.
I have a suggestion for you.
Okay.
That may accommodate delaying, but not delaying. The council takes the vote tonight to accept exactly as it's worded. Now, again, that does not implement the Benchmark Plan. That enables me to begin the discussion with the unions, okay? It begins the process. I will commit to the council that I will not implement the Benchmark Plan unless I come back and talk to you at your next meeting.
I would like to see a, a meeting...
Now, you have to trust me, because I could get crazy, and I could go implement the Benchmark Plan for some money reason.
We have you on camera saying this.
But I'm telling you, I'm not going to do it because you'll fire me the next morning. And I don't want to get fired.
But I would like to see a meeting, like a public hearing-type meeting, a council of the whole meeting, where the employees can come up and ask their questions and, and, and speak their concerns. Mr. Murray did make a very valid point, so...
Are you all set?
Thank you.
Counselor Clemmons?
So is there any way to postpone till Monday? You're, I understand what you're saying. If Monday is too late and we allow you to go forward, could we still then perhaps hold a special meeting on Monday after you've gotten all this information, and then there would be more justice in what? I understand where you're coming from in terms of time. Is Monday too late for your time? And if it is...
Again, so the council understands, the numbers might get better, probably not, but they might get better. They won't get worse.
They won't get worse?
No.
Okay, that's important. I don't think people realize that.
You're not going to have a whole different scenario tomorrow, or the day after, or next month. These numbers are, are likely cast in stone, but I wanted the opportunity of one more negotiation with Fallon and Maya to play them against one another, to see if I could get something better for the employees and for the taxpayers. But the likelihood is not great. So your decision, if I can make the numbers better, gets easier. It, it's not the case that you're going to come back in a week and you're going to have a tougher decision to make. So you've got all the facts in front of you tonight that you need to make the decision, save one. And that is, where are the employees on this? Now, I can't give you that. There's no way to do that. I'm also going to speculate here that unless people are willing to dig into this in detail, and I will, I will sit with them for 16 straight hours if they want... and I will sit with them for 16 straight hours if they want, that they're not, they're not going to see the advantages to this unless they really get into the guts of it. But once they do, they're going to see exactly what this is. It's a huge opportunity. Can I get back to you with that by next Monday night, based upon one meeting with the IAC and the one I already had with the union leadership? And by the way, the meeting with the union leadership, we didn't give numbers out, we didn't have them. We gave very preliminary kinds of numbers. These numbers are now pretty concrete, the ones I gave to the subcommittee and have distributed tonight. They're pretty concrete, but they could get better. So what information are we going to have next week, or the week after, or the week after that, that we don't already have? Answer: None that's going to make this worse. A little, it might make it better, but not hugely better. So all the facts are here to make the decision. But I understand that if the council wants to hear some input from the employees, then I can get something Thursday night from the IAC, but I think Ryan's already indicated they're not inclined to be favorable, so I don't know what more we're going to learn.
The numbers are changing. It's only because the numbers are changing. It changed this morning, so we at least have to take a look at those numbers, which, you know, we just got it at the subcommittee. So our body has to take a look at it. We have to bring it back to our body.
So if there's a chance the IAC is keeping an open mind and will listen to this, then-
We're willing to listen to you on Thursday. That's our next scheduled meeting.
Yes, what, I'm sorry?
We're meeting with you Thursday night, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the new set of numbers you produced today will be produced prior to that Thursday meeting, and maybe we'll have more of an idea before.
Well, just so it's clear, the numbers will be these numbers you already have, or they'll be better. They won't be worse.
The numbers that I got, the numbers we got in subcommittee were not the numbers you handed us last week.
We understand that.
Okay. But the numbers we got today, we have to present to the bodies.
Again, the numbers you receive today at the subcommittee will get better or not, but they won't get worse.
Okay.
And these numbers are substantially better than the ones you had last week. These are much better.
They are better.
So the progression is that the numbers may get better. So here's what I'm saying to you. If people are waiting for the numbers to settle, to make a decision, and the numbers are only getting better, I guess I'm a little, I'm confused. What's the beef? If the numbers you already had last week were pretty good, and these are better, and you may get even better, when do we decide? When do we make the decision?
The decision is made when my body's informed, and I'll do that as quickly as I can. That's all I can tell you.
So the decision won't be made by the IAC Thursday night, because you cannot simultaneously attend a meeting and inform your membership?
The preliminary numbers will be presented to-
Ryan, if you could, just for the sake of everybody, those at home especially.
I apologize for shouting.
No problem.
The numbers that we got at the subcommittee meeting will be presented to my police union as quickly as possible. If not tonight, first thing tomorrow morning, so at least my people can digest what's in front of them.
And what about the other five unions? Do we know anything about those?
Well, the other, the other unions, whether they're here or not, or the other members of the IAC, did not have the packet that you handed out at subcommittee. So I want to get that to all the parties involved, give them time to analyze that and go over that. I'm going to try and do this as quickly as possible.
Okay.
Out of fairness to everybody involved, as quickly as I can. And hopefully, come Thursday, when we meet with you, we get a better idea where you're headed, and a better idea with where the numbers have been presented up to this point.
So here's where we are in answer to the question. Thank you, Ryan.
Okay, thank you.
And I appreciate what you're trying to do. So here's the answer to the question. We've got, I think, five bargaining units, if I'm not incorrect, and I think we've got another four associations. And I don't know if I have to bargain with them or not, because they're not full unions, they're associations. So let's assume I've got five to deal with. I have no idea, other than the police, when the other four will dialogue with their members and produce some sort of indication. So I cannot answer your question in terms of what more would I have for you next Monday night. My strong suspicion is that I will have nothing more for you next Monday night, except the outcome of a meeting of the IAC, which will be not definitive. I will be astounded if they were to take a favorable vote. You know, it's very much the case in health insurance, and I understand, it's human nature, I'd do it too probably, that in that where you don't understand absolutely positively 100%, the null case is what you do. You reject it. Because I don't get it, I don't understand it, I know what I got now, I'm not changing. So it's very, very hard to get the affirmative vote the council's looking for from five bargaining units. Moreover, I can't, I don't know how to say this again. 100 cities and towns, one-third of the states, one-third of the boards of select and councils in the state have already pulled the trigger on this, and the entire Commonwealth for all-state employees have already done this. I've done it in a couple other places. We did not do it by asking the employees' permission. The law specifically was written to allow the elected board to make the decision without asking the employees' permission, because prior to the health reform, the municipal health reform law, you had to bargain every change with the employee unions. And the state came along and said, "We understand that if you have to bargain every change with an employee sector union, you will never-"
I agree.
"-you will never bargain anything substantive." Certainly not on this magnitude. And so they passed the law letting you do it unilaterally. But if you don't take advantage of that law, and you ask me to bargain and get consensus, you're undoing the whole intent of the law. I would love to talk to all the employees who get consensus. I would love to do it, because you know what? Call me naive, but I think if I had the time, and all this hadn't rolled out the way it did, to explain this in detail with every employee, that they would end up saying, "This is a good deal." I mean, I'm not reaching that conclusion for, this is costing the town money. Why would I be recommending to you and to the employees that we should do this when my job is to save the town money? Why would I do that? Why would the treasurer just stand up at the microphone and say, "This is a good thing for the employees"? You know, I'm gone in four months. She's got to live here. So. I think that's what you said, isn't it? So I think if we were given the time, that we would get to that. The problem is, you don't have that time. Now, if you, if you take the vote tonight, and we start the process, one of two outcomes has to happen. The unions agree to waive their rights. Anybody want to take a guess what the chances of that are? Not real great. In order to get the unions to waive their rights, I'm going to have to absolutely positively convince them this is a good thing, okay? So the council would have what you'd like. The union's saying, "We think it's a good thing. We waive our rights." More than likely, though, I'm going to be, I'm going to have to engage the unions in a discussion, and that whole time clock is going to play out until I get to a consensus and come back to you, and say in six weeks or so, we've now reached closure. And then the question will be, because that will be less than 60 days before July 1, will the carriers implement it or not with less than 60 days' notice? I'm not naive about these things. I've been doing bargaining with unions for 40 years. I know how it goes. Do I think I'm going to get all five bargaining units and potentially four more to agree completely that this is a great thing? Well, I'll tell you what. If that was possible, the municipal health reform law would not have passed in the state. That's why it gives you the unilateral right to make that decision, and not have to ask the union's permission. That's the, and I hate to be the bad guy here, because I know that's how I'm going to get cast, but that's the brutal, hard fact about how this law is supposed to work. It isn't supposed to be a negotiation leading to consensus. It's supposed to be management making a decision which plainly is in the best interest of the employees and the taxpayers, and being bold enough to pull the trigger. And that's what I'm doing. That's what I'm telling you as your town manager, that this is a good deal. But it's up to you all to decide if you want to take advantage of this opportunity or not.
I appreciate your words, and I have to echo the fact that we are elected up here to do what's in the best interest of the entire community. We're talking about saving $228,000 for the community in our budget, and helping you out also. We didn't get up here and just get elected by the unions. We got elected by all the citizens in this community, and we all have to put in our dues. And you have to do what's right for the community, not just what's right for the unions. I think we had that discussion up here not that long ago. And it's not, you know, it's not just the employees in this community. It's the taxpayers and everybody else. I beg to say that a number of, many of our employees may not even be residents or taxpayers here. They live in other communities. So this vote is about our money, this community's money, and our employees, yes, which we take pretty good care of, I think. And I think we need to either move forward with this, or prepare to spend a lot more money.
Any other questions, comments, and the like? Counselor Manor?
Yes. I agree with what Counselor Clemmons has said. I would, though, like to see if this does pass. I would like to see a meeting so it can be explained to the employees, because that was a huge concern. They didn't, they didn't, it was given to them on such short notice, you know? This right here, we didn't even have it in our packets. So, I mean, that's a huge concern for me. I really would like to see a meeting to where they can come out and talk and ask the questions more so than what they were trying, right up in here. I mean, there wasn't enough room in the veterans' room last, tonight, last night, it's going on last night, but-
Please understand that that's going to happen irrespective. I'm not suggesting that the council take the vote, and then tomorrow morning I drop a hammer on the employees. That's not the way I act, you know that. You've seen the way I've conducted my affairs for almost nine months now. That's not how I do business. I fully intend to continue the engagement with the employees now that we have numbers and have a discussion about it. And I'm absolutely convinced that the majority of employees, once they fully understand this, and I will work as hard as it takes to make sure that happens, they will embrace us, and they will say, "You know what? You're right. This is a good thing." You won't get 100% unanimous endorsement. That's never happened. At least, I've never heard of it, in order to happen in my experience. But you could get people who say, "This is a good thing." And then I'll come back to the council, and I'll do whatever it is you want. I'll report to you what happens. You could talk to the union leaders. You can, you can do whatever it is you want. And then I'll implement or not. The process won't have slowed down. It will be going on. But if you fail to vote tonight-
You can't start the process.
-then you have just shot yourself in the foot for probably at least two months, potentially 14 months. And you're going to, the employees and the town's taxpayers are going to eat that 10% increase. And I don't think there's anything we can do to stop it, because the carriers aren't going to say, "Okay, we'll give you 10% status quo renewal for June, for May, June, July, August, and then September 1st we'll put the benchmark in effect." They don't do that. They, they're giving you a break and giving you this 14% renewal, I mean, 14-month renewal. They're saying, "We'll take you from May 1 to June 30 of 2016." Pretty unusual, but they're doing it. And now they're giving you the benchmark mandate. I guess they're agreeing May 1 to put in the lower rate. Originally, they were telling us, "You got the 10% on May 1, no matter what." Well, now they're telling us to give us a lower rate on, on May 1, if we can notify them. I mean, the carriers, everybody is bending over backwards to accommodate Southbridge, but we're shooting ourselves in the foot.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm through.
Counselor Vecia?
When we want to vote, and somebody says we're shooting ourselves in the foot so we can get, he can get a vote the way he wants it, I don't like it. I could say something, but I'm not, I'm going to be very polite about it. But last year's budget versus this year's budget has increased 10%, and the contribution shift has been, changed 10%. I don't see any increases. So we could talk about this all night, but that's the way I feel about it. And I don't want an argument about this, but I would like to vote.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please. Counselor Moriarty?
Of course.
No. Counselor Peliquin?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
God, I'm confused.
No. Counselor Vando?
No.
Counselor Vecia?
No.
Counselor Carrasco?
No.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Nope.
Counselor Manor?
Yes.
Three yes, six no. Motion does not carry. Moving on to agenda item number 13. Vote to authorize the Toter Maintenance Revolving Fund under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53 E and 1/2, to pay for the replacement of lost and/or damaged toters from fees paid by homeowners and deposited in the account, with all expenditures to be approved by the Health Department, and total expenditures from the account not to exceed $5,000 per year.
All move.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
No counselors? I guess it's my turn again. I guess this will be a hat-trick, and Kevin Buckson, 24 Columbus Ave. I've been up before this council before. I still don't know where this program got approval, but I have to look at it now as it's, now it's expanding its empire into a financial vehicle to somehow. I don't really think I've seen any public information as to how this program functions. I don't know whether it's been all done through the Board of Health, and as such, I've been at Board of Health meetings, there's been no great explanation as to why. What I see is, it's, it's the growth of an empire, you know? We talk about missing out on our landfill money in another five years. Well, imagine what the Board of Health is going through. When the landfill closes, they need to find something else to occupy their time. And I'm sorry, handing out trash barrels is just one of them. They've also talked about, "We're going to inspect every single apartment and make an approval on it." I just can't justify it. We talk about our budget considerations, and yet I don't seem to get anybody aware of the fact that this is going to cost us close, at least a quarter of a million dollars, $250,000, not counting indirect cost. Now, are these toters going to be, what, picked up at the town hall, right here in the Board of Health? Do you have to go to Gulfwood Road? What do you do about seniors who don't have transportation? What is, what do you do about handicap? I don't have a pickup truck. I don't drive. Do I get one delivered? Well, if I get one delivered, do I get it delivered by a town employee? Or do they hire a cab and throw it in the back of the cab and say, "Drop this off at my address"? I, I really don't understand that, with the concerns we have for budgets and everything, and why this program continues to grow. A financial revolving account for damaged material, for damaged carts. Now, I get my first cart. Like I said, I'm not sure of the program, I'm just guessing. and say, drop this off at my address? I really don't understand that with the concerns we have for budgets and everything and why this program continues to grow. A financial revolving account for damaged mater, for damaged carts. Now, I get my first cart. Like I said, I'm not sure of the program, I'm just guessing. I get my first cart for free. Little Johnny next door comes by, busts a wheel off it. All right, now I have to turn in my broken cart. Now I have to pay $52, all right? Now, when little Johnny comes over and busts my wheel again, am I paying another $52? For what? So that I can have a trash barrel with Southbridge logos on it? Right from the beginning, I said, you can exhibit each of the contract, any cost for curbside pickup is responsible of the carrier. A counselor made the comment, when do we get weekly recycling? Well, town manager says the council wants weekly recycling. If there's any cost associated with that, then all that happens is they say, well, there's an additional $35,000 worth of cost if we pick up recycling every week. Fine, instead of $630,000, we pay $663,000, $665,000 and that money is paid back to us in 12-month increments. It's a, it's a write-off, except for the interest they gain while it's sitting in the account. We won't get into that. But I'm sorry, I need, I need to find somebody who can bring this program to the attention of the council and the public and try to give some explanation. Where are these rules and regulations? Who established the fee of $52? Is $52 a realistic fee? When you consider that the indirect cost of people having to move them and store them and distribute them, is that a realistic cost? Or we just, the town employees who have to deal with them, well, we'll just pass that on to them?
Mr. Buxton?
I don't know what more I can say, so I won't ask for another three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments on the agenda item? Councilor Manah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'd just like to say, I think this is a wonderful program. It's voluntary. And if you drive around town lately and you see some of these trashcans laying out in the street, off the sidewalk, garbage all over the place, well, then I would be more than happy to go deliver the carts myself just to make this town look halfway decent. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Some of Mr. Buxton's comments. It was brought up at the EHS meeting. We had Andy Pelletier discuss why the need for this. Some of you are aware, there's a program right now with actual trash totters, not recycling totters, trash totters. The money is coming out of the $75,000 or so a year that we get to help to increase recycling rates and overall benefit to the community in that respect. So, the initial totters were bought out of that account. Not money that we can just take and spend and save, but money that's provided by Casella for a certain purpose. The person, my understanding, that we have the employee that's being paid under the same auspices, delivers these totters. People want a totter, they come to the Board of Health, they fill out a form, gives their name, their address, information. The totter gets delivered at some point. The reason for revolving account is to help at some level replenish carts that have gotten damaged or stolen or whatever. Your first cart is free, as was stated. Your first cart comes, you keep using it, that's great. If by some reason you want a second cart or this cart disappears and you want another cart, yeah, there will be a deposit. You return a cart, you'll get that money back. If you never return a cart, you won't get the money back. The money will go into this revolving account not to exceed $5,000 per year for the benefit of the cleanliness of our community. That's how it was explained to us. Starting a revolving account is very minimal. It's not the approval of $250,000 for buying more carts. It's just to help maintain what we're already doing at this point. It is a voluntary program at this point. And as we stated in the, in the meeting, one of the reasons for having like carts with wonderful bars that the trucks can pick up is because we have complaints of how long these carts, the trucks are on the road and picking up our trash. By keeping things uniform with these types of carts and our recycling cart, it makes trash pick up much quicker, makes the road safer, and it's just a good aesthetic thing for the community. And it is not coming out of taxpayer dollars. So, that's the explanation I can give you based on the information from the EHS meeting I was at.
Could you put in my hand a public-approved document on how the procedure was established? The rules, regulations, fines, and... By law.
This, this project was developed in the Board of Health's office. They did, right, because they have the funds, like when we started the Think, Reduce, Reuse website and all those other types of programs, that was all to the benefit of the community overall. If you have more questions, I suggest you do ask the department head, who isn't here tonight, but certainly you're welcome to clock in. If you've done it, you know where it is, go and ask him some more questions versus making statements that aren't necessarily 100% true. I'm only saying the information that was given to us. If it's not true, go to the department head and he can explain more of it. But I'm only explaining it as it was explained to me in a subcommittee meeting. Thank you.
Without questioning any of what was being told to you?
No, we do question, we do question. That's why we go to committee.
I'm sorry. As far as the pickup of the trash using automated machinery, they could have done that when they moved their recycling totters out. They never did. They went to, the trucks have a dual pickup, but it's not the electronic arms that grab it like you see in big cities. And I don't think you're going to see anytime soon them revamping the other equipment. About the only thing they may do is start using the recycling machines to pick up trash.
Mr. Buxton, while I enjoy your input, I didn't ask you any questions. I just made my comments. So, was Mr. Buxton supposed to respond back? Because he made comment, I responded to my, with my comment. So, I don't think we need to argue about it. We have a difference of opinion.
I apologize.
We do have a difference of opinion, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call, please. Councilor Peliquin?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor Vando?
Yes.
Councilor Vecia?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clemens?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Eight yes, one no. Was there a no? No problem, it's late. So, it passes. Agenda Item Number 14. Vote to rescind the authorized unissued balances loan orders as follows. Order that the authorized unissued balances of the following loan orders of the town council are hereby rescinded in the amount of $54,978 middle high school project. Date of passing was February 8th, 2010. And $11,750 for the purpose of a fire department pumper truck with the date of passing being May 20, 2013. This requires a two-thirds votes.
Second. No, I was going to, I was going to ask...
Yeah, that's what I was going to do as well. Just for the sake of the general public as to what this actually is.
Sure, these are bond authorizations where when we did the actual project and the bidding, we didn't need the full amount. So, you have to rescind it, otherwise it continues to get carried on our debt ratios.
Any questions, Council Steves?
Yeah, I noticed that the 54, 9 million project, how, so how much is actually left over as far as that goes? Because I know the project was, what, 60, 39?
I believe the authorization was 80 million, correct?
80 million.
And so, the difference between 80 and 54.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call, please. Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor Vando?
Yes.
Councilor Vecia?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clemens?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Peliquin?
Yes.
Nine yes. Thank you, motion carries. Agenda Item Number 15. Vote to approve the acceptance of the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 66, Section 15B, to establish a tax title collection revolving fund for the treasurer-collector.
So moved, second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please. Councilor Vando?
Yes.
Councilor Vecia?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clemens?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Peliquin?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yep.
Nine yes. Thank you, motion carries. Agenda Item Number 16. Vote to approve the zoning map change on Gulfwood Road to rezone the rear portion of the property at 79 Gulfwood Road from two-family residential to a light industrial zone as recommended by the planning board. And for the third and final reading, briefly, this would do, this is what it would do, would be to expand the light industrial zone on Gulfwood Road by rezoning the rear portion of the property at 79 Gulfwood Road, Assessors Map 22, Lot 72. The rear portion of the lot is currently zoned two-family residential. The proposed zoning change will make the entire lot light industrial as shown on a map entitled Gulfwood, Gulfwood Road Zoning Map Request 2014.
So moved, second.
Just as a note, this was passed with unanimous favor, not passed, but recommended unanimously by the planning board. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call, please. Councilor Vecia?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clemens?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Peliquin?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yep.
Councilor Vando?
Yes.
Nine yes. Thank you, motion carries. Agenda Item Number 17. Vote to accept the town of Southbridge policy on use of town council with the purpose of preventative legal advice to avoid expensive lawsuits, proper defensive claims made against the town, and proper management of the legal budget within appropriation.
Second.
This will be the first reading and just, I will try to get through this as quickly as we can. This is the purpose. It is the purpose of this policy to ensure the access of town council, as in legal council, is processed in a manner which accomplishes the purposes of preventive, preventative, legal advice to avoid expensive lawsuits, proper defensive claims made against the town, proper fiscal management of the legal budget within appropriation. And then, within there, authority to hire counsel. The town manager is authorized by the town charter to appoint a town attorney or counsel and special counsel subject to the confirmation of such appointments by the full counsel. No other board, committee, or commission may employ legal counsel without permission of the town manager except the town treasurer solely for the purposes of tax title services and the CFO/treasurer solely for the purposes of bond counsel services. The only exception to this provision of the charter is the school committee who is authorized to employ counsel. Access to counsel. The charter delegates the town manager the authority to manage the town attorney and special counsel budget as well as access to the town attorney/special counsel services. Any board, committee, commission, or employee who wishes access to town attorney/special counsel must submit a request to the town manager on the legal services request form attached to this policy. The town manager or in his or her absence, the interim town manager, will act to approve or deny the request within five days. The request form will be returned to the department in a copy sent to the chief financial officer of the town, the town attorney, and to special counsel if those specialty services will be engaged. The authority to assign legal service work to the town attorney or special counsel is solely the responsibility of the town manager. If the request is approved, the town attorney/special counsel is authorized to provide the legal services requested. If the town attorney/special counsel is contacted for any purpose by any party without an approved authorization form, he or she is hereby directed to advise the person, contacting them, that further discussion is not authorized. If denied or not properly authorized by the attached form, the town attorney or special counsel is hereby advised that any services provided will be in violation of the expressed will of the town council acting by and through its town manager as well as a violation of the provisions of the town charter and will not be paid. Just as a note, is that council miss, okay?
Yes.
So, in the act, it would be changed to be town council as in this body as opposed to legal counsel. The chief financial officer of the town is hereby directed to ensure that no invoice for legal services will be paid unless a legal services request form has authorized the services. In certain emergency situations, legal services may be verbally authorized by the town manager or in his or her absence by the interim town manager, but the authorizing party must complete and approve a legal services request form as outlined above as soon as practicable. Town council access to the town attorney and special councils. The individual members of the council recognize that their authority under statute of the charter is exercised through the entire council when acting as a body in a lawful meeting. As such, council members agree that they will access the town attorney or special councils only pursuant to a vote of the council. When so authorized by the council, the chairman of the council, the town manager, or any, or another member of the council when specifically delegated by the council will contact the town attorney or special counsel and request service consistent with the council's vote. Individual members of the council may contact the town attorney or special counsel directly without seeking a vote of the council for advice on conflict of interest or personal liability issues involving the council member personally. In the case of such consultation, the council member will advise the town manager for purposes of billing coordination. Votes of the council authorizing access to legal services will be promptly reported to the CFO by the town manager for billing and payment coordination. Direction to the town attorney and special counsel. By passage of this, of this policy, the town manager is directed to communicate this policy to the town attorney and special counsel and to relate the council and town manager's intent for the town attorney and special counsel to abide by its terms. And then lastly, do we need to read the request for legal services? Councilor Manah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I do have a concern about Section 3.5 under the town council access to the town attorney/special councils. Individual members of the council may contact the town attorney or special counsel directly without seeking a vote of the council for advice on conflict of interest. That one's my first one. We have an attorney general's office that does that for us for free. So, I don't know why we would be seeking council service to do that and pay for it.
Any town employee, and counselors are, meet the legal definition of employee, has a statutory right to seek an opinion, written or verbal, from the town attorney about a potential conflict. And we can't take that away, this is restating the law.
I'm just confused on that. Then why would we have an attorney general's office that we go to to seek the advice? That's, that's part of the law too.
The AG lawyer of the day will provide an advisory opinion, but not a binding opinion.
For free.
For free.
For free.
But not a binding opinion. And they, and if you act in accordance with it, there's no necessary record of it. But if you request a written opinion, which is your statutory right, and you act in accordance with it, then you are protected from bad faith violations.
Right, but you're, you're, you're only not, it's not... You can remain anonymous through the attorney general's office and then they can't come back with, they can't come to you and they can't give you an answer, basically.
Again, this states a right in the law. You cannot abridge that right.
Okay.
You have to have this clause in here because you already have that legal right. So, if you left this silent, I suppose, if you struck the whole paragraph, that would be okay. But then I think it's a disservice to counselors because they may not know they have that right. So, this kind of lets them know they do. You don't want a counselor committing a violation of the ethics law because they didn't know. You want them to seek an opinion so they have that protection. It can get pretty tricky, believe me.
No, no, I totally understand that. And when I was running for council, I was given those papers. And when I was sworn in, I was given those papers. I had to take the ethics test. You go to the opening law train, you go through all that stuff. And this is just offered to you. I just don't, it just doesn't make sense to me why you would pay for it. But I understand what you're saying, it's your right. Maybe that should be put in there. You have the right to counsel instead of, you may contact. I mean, we're going to be going really newly really newly every time we think that there's a conflict of interest, and it's gonna cost the town a fortune. That's my opinion. And then, the second is the personal liability issue involving the council member personally, that's, as it pertains to...
Again, Chapter 258, as opposed to 268. 258 is the indemnification clause in the law for public officials. And again, you have a legal right to representation by the town's attorney for any charges of liability arising out of the performance of your official duties.
Official duties, okay.
So, by extension, you have the right to check before you get into a situation and make sure you don't. And since, since the cost to defend an inadvertent act of liability is far less than a little prevention, it's good to get prevention.
Well, you just said the key word, official duty, so, and go to the back. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Councilor Steves?
Yeah, a couple of simple points. One is in Section 2.9A, you mentioned certain emergency situations, how are you defining those?
What's that?
Section 2.9A, you mentioned certain emergency situations, how are those defined?
What would one be, for instance, you mean?
Yeah, I mean, under what certain, what emergency situations would you be able to go through verbal authorization without town council approval?
You know, off the top of my head, I can't think of one, but I know that emergencies do occur.
Yeah.
And so, if somebody were confronted with one, presumably, they would call me on the phone, or the interim, on the phone, and we would verbally authorize it because there wouldn't be time to do the form. I mean, I'm trying to think of an example, and nothing's coming to mind, but I've had them happen, I just can't think of one.
Okay. And also, in Section 1.2, it seemed like there was a typo there, I'm assuming that CFO/Treasurer should read CFO/Accountant.
I'm sorry, Gus.
Section 1.2?
Yeah.
Section 1.2, it says CFO/Treasurer, I'm assuming you mean CFO/Accountant, since it's redundant, you already said the town treasurer.
CFO/Treasurer is...
Shouldn't that be, should that read CFO/Accountant?
No, it means the CFO and the treasurer because they do the bonding.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, that's not a mistake.
Oh, okay. Oh, and also, for Section 3.5, if the school committee has the right to go for, to seek counsel, to seek counsel without council approval, shouldn't that also include individual members of the council or school committee?
No, the school committee has that right in the charter.
Oh, okay.
No one else does.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions, comments?
I could say that it got full approval, it was unanimously voted to recommend to council that we adopt the policy, and the subcommittee. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clemmons?
Yes.
Councilor Strada?
Yes.
Councilor Manor?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Pellican?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor Vando?
Yes.
Councilor Vecchia?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Motion carries. We'll have Agenda item number 18, councilor's forum, and we will start with Councilor Pellican.
Nothing for me tonight, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Councilor Manor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. The Dancing for Domestic Violence fundraiser on 4/11, I really wanted to go, but I'm not gonna be here. But is there a website or something that I can make a donation to?
I am not aware of any real website, but if you'd like, I can, I will contact, excuse me, Margot Chevers, who is organizing the event, and I'll ask her how best to send her a donation.
Okay, thank you very much. And also, you brought up some concerns during your chairman's announcements in regards to past councils being on, on boards and whatnot. I just want to put out here that our charter can be found on our website, and this will clear up any issues, also along with our bylaws. And if you go onto our website, and you click on departments, and you go onto the clerk's office, that's where you can find our town charter and our town bylaws. And that will help you along in the way, instead of just assuming that something could be wrong, you actually have the facts, and then you can ask the accurate questions. And that's it. Have a good night.
Thank you. Councilor Strada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, no comment on the Gunaia Goblechor season. Thank you.
Councilor Clemmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just on a subject that we beat to death tonight. It was three, four years ago that our previous town manager, at the request of many who were tired of high rates of insurance and 50/50 contributions and all kinds of things, we put our finance people through the paces and tried to bring change back then. GIC, no GIC, did a big comprehensive review, tried to come up with the best deals, how could we better serve our employees? And I feel like tonight, once again, we've wasted a lot of company time, and once again, we allowed the unions, the employees, most of the unions, I guess, in that respect, to dictate how we would go about coming to some sort of better place as far as insurance went for this community. And it's a shame that we couldn't see the forest through the trees. Hopefully, someday, maybe not in my lifetime here, but someday, we'll come to grips with the reality of insurance and how it affects everybody in this community, and the steps that we can all take to improve that. So, I want to thank those who went and did their best. Perhaps it's not over, but at this point, I want to thank Mr. Pecos for working so hard and providing what looked really wonderful to me. I mean, I would have taken that plan. It's a far cry from mine. And the finance team, as I said, for all their hard work, put a lot of hours, and I do appreciate the work you've done. Thank you.
I'm all set, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm all set.
No problem. Thank you. Councilor Vecchia?
Thank you. Through chairman to the town manager, this letter that we got from Cheryl Stanton on kindergarten, kindergarten, here.
Kindergarten.
Did you, did you see it?
Yeah, I did.
All right. Can, is she gonna put this in her budget?
I don't know.
And what is our cost if, do we have costs for this?
We don't.
We don't have no costs?
I don't think so. There's nothing, there's certainly nothing in the budget for it.
No, but I'm talking about, I urge you to support the level funding for full-day kindergarten, $98,300. Who pays that? The state?
Honestly, Apple, I don't know, I apologize, but I'm a little flat-footed because I'm...
Well, okay. You had the letter, right?
I think so.
Okay. Well, you wanna take mine?
No, that's okay.
And check into this?
I don't know if this is a request for town council, a vote of the town council?
No, it isn't.
Or whether this is something in the budget?
She wants us to support it. She sent it to the town council and the school committee, she wants us to support this.
Oh, support it with the legislature, I think.
Right. To endorse it, essentially.
Endorse it with the legislature.